Hello, everyone. Watching our list populate. There's approximately seventy six folks are signed up to join us this evening. We're just going to give it a minute to populate before we get started. I apologize for our late start. We had an executive session. It went a little bit longer than what we anticipated. So we'll just give it a few more minutes here and then we'll go ahead and get started. All right, our numbers seem to have leveled off. So I would like to welcome everyone to the Seneca Valley School District School Board Work Session of February seventh, twenty twenty two. At this time, I would ask that everyone join me in a moment of silence, please. Thank you very much, and I will turn it over to Ms. Andracy for the I Led the Pledge, please.
Good evening. Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight's student for I Led the Pledge is Annabelle Alexander. She is a fourth grader at Hayne Elementary School. Annabelle was nominated this evening by the administration at Hayne Elementary, which includes Ms. Kristen White, Principal, and Mr. Jeremy Womer, Assistant Principal. Annabelle is the daughter of Richard and Christine Alexander of Cranberry Township. She has two siblings, Ellie, who is a freshman in the intermediate high school, and Grant, who is a two thousand eighteen graduate of Seneca Valley. Annabelle shares with us that her favorite subject is math, and that she would one day like to be a teacher. She is currently learning how to play cello at Hayne in the orchestra, and she is also a swimmer with the Seneca Valley Swim Club. And she also shared with us that she very much is enjoying the new Aquatic Center. So we are thrilled to share with you tonight her I Led the Pledge video. So at this time, I would ask the board and administration to please turn off their videos. And to then please stand, if you are able, and join us as Annabelle leads us all in the pledge of allegiance. Dr. Polano, when you're ready.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much, Annabelle. All right, we will move on then to the roll call. Ms. Missland, please.
Ms. Bradel.
Here.
Mr. DiTullio.
Here.
Ms. Harrison.
Here.
Mr. Hester.
Here.
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Nickel. Mr. Peterson. Ms. Whittle.
Here.
Mr. Whittleson.
Here.
Thank you very much. I'll invite Ms. Andracy to take control again for our information reports, please.
Thank you again, Mr. President. We have two items this evening for student-staff recognition. Under the first one, the Pittsburgh North Regional Chamber recently celebrated the people and businesses in our community who have stepped up and served others this past year by recognizing their efforts as twenty twenty one Community Champion Award Honorees. We are proud to share that the Seneca Valley Foundation was chosen as one of the award winners for this wonderful honor. And according to the PNRC, SVF provided leadership and structure when people needed it the most. SVS, SVF, as you know, is committed to providing the gift of hope and the promise of excellence to students and staff of the Seneca Valley School District. And through SV, SVF's efforts, excuse me, the district is provided with the extras that really set us apart from other schools in the region. While its traditional focus is science, technology, engineering, and mathematics, early literacy and global citizenship, SVF has been critical in helping the district ensure its students and staff's basic needs were met over the past two years. Under the leadership of Executive Director Dr. Tracy Vitale and Director of Development, Ms. Annie Mersing, the foundation connected resources during the pandemic, delivered food and household products to vulnerable families, helped to create a memorable senior year for both the class of twenty twenty and twenty twenty one, and boosted staff morale by hosting food truck days at each of the district's nine schools. Now, Ms. Mersing is here with us tonight, and she can certainly speak more to this should you have questions. But I wanted to share a quote with you from her in which she stated that the SVF is grateful to be recognized by the Pittsburgh North Regional Chamber. Quote, "Our efforts, whether supporting the district in its COVID nineteen response or funding excellence in academics, helps really set Seneca Valley apart from other districts in the region. Having these efforts acknowledged by such a prestigious chamber is quite an honor." Unquote. And we really couldn't agree more. And, and Mr. President, at this point, I'll just pause briefly if you or any board members have any comments or questions regarding this.
Are there any questions or comments from the board members? I'll look around first. I'm definitely gonna jump in. This is amazing, as always, Ms. Mersing. You know, we can't sing your praises enough for what you do, what the entire foundation does, to help the students, to help, you know, the schools individually as a collective unit. I mean, you, you always go above and beyond. It's always an honor to see everything that you've done. And it makes us feel good. It makes us look good as a board of directors when we have someone like you doing the things that you do to support not only the district but all the students in the district. So thank you very much for all the hard work you and the entire staff and the foundation has put into this. Any other board members, questions, comments? Mr. Hester, was that?
No, sir. I thought I'd frozen there for a second. Sorry.
No problem. Okay. Well, thank you, Ms. Mersing. I don't know. Is there anything you wanted to add? You know, I know we got a quote from you, but...
Now, I just thank you for allowing me to do this work. It's truly a team effort with all the foundation trustees and our staff who supports us so well and the entire community. So PNRC is one of the top three chambers in America. So for them to see us and see what we're doing, as I said, it's quite an honor, and just thank you for allowing us to do it.
You're welcome, and thank you again for all the hard work. Ms. Andracy, I'll turn back over to you.
Thank you, Mr. President. Our second item this evening, and with a score of forty seven thousand twenty six points and over six thousand point lead, the Seneca Valley Academic Decathlon Team placed first and took home forty five medals at the most recent regional competition held at Collegiate Academy on January eighth. The students competed in eight events, including art, music, literature, mathematics, economics, social science, science, and essay. Their next competition will be the United States Academic Decathlon Regional Competition, and that will be held at Clarion Limestone, February eleventh and twelfth. We wish them the best of luck, and I'm certain I'll be bringing back some good news soon. Our next item under dates to remember, this is February, so this is National Black History Month. This is also the time that we open our twenty-two, twenty-three SV kindergarten registration, and that will remain open now through the spring and up to the summer months. You can find more information at svsd.net. It is right on our homepage in the banner. You'll see it there. February seventh through the eleventh this week, we'll be celebrating National School Counseling Week. Again, more information can be seen on our website. February fourteenth, next Monday, we'll return for our school board regular meeting at seven PM. February eighteenth, which is next Friday, this will be a snow makeup day for the January twenty-seventh school closure that we had. So again, school will be in session on February eighteenth. February twenty-first, that's next, no, that's two Mondays from now. That will be President's Day, which is an act eighty day. There is no school for students. And on February twenty-fifth, this will be the Academy of Choice Cyber Programs End of Second Trimester for grades K through six. And that is all I have, Mr. President, unless anybody has any questions.
Are there any questions from board members? I'm gonna apologize. I got kicked off my computer, so I'm on my phone, so I can't see everyone at the same time. So feel free to holler out if, if you'd like to say something. All right. Hearing and not seeing anyone as I scroll through, we will say thank you, Ms. Andracy, and we will move on in our agenda to the Butler County Area Vocational Technical School Proposed Budget. It's included in your backup, and I believe Ms. Hyler is going to actually do a presentation. Is that correct?
Yes, Mr. DiTullio. Dr. Hyler will be joining us, and we will be sharing a screen to show you the VoTech budget. Dr. Hyler is entering the virtual room now. Hello, Dr. Hyler, from our Butler County Vocational School. Welcome.
Hello. Thank you for having me. Can everyone hear me? Okay, I see some nods. Thank you. Just double checking. Good evening, everybody. It's Seneca Valley. Again, I am Regina Hyler, I'm the Director at Butler County Air Vocational Technical School. Thank you for the opportunity to present this budget, the proposed twenty-two, twenty-three budget. You should have board members, you should have received an envelope through the USPS either by Saturday or today with your ballot for you to complete in the proposed budget. If you wish to do so this evening after I present, please check yes, no, or abstain, and please complete the sections with your name, date, and school district. You can then mail these back to us, back to BCAVTS in the self-addressed stamp envelope, and we would need those back by April fourth of twenty twenty-two. And at our April seventh meeting, that's whenever we will open the ballots in person or possibly virtually, either, either way, it'll be recorded. You may wonder why we start this process in February. It is because due to our Articles of Agreement, we must have a BCAVTS budget passed by the April meeting, and that's the April meeting is April seventh. At this point, I will present the twenty-two proposed twenty-two, twenty-three budget, and I will go page by page. So on the first page, you will see on the first section, the total operating budget for twenty-one, twenty-two, and the proposed budget for twenty-two, twenty-three, with a grand total of six, three, oh, five, eight, eight, four, with an increase of two, three, zero, five, nine, five. In the second section, this depicts the total operating budget with our budgetary reserve. I will give further details about this budgetary reserve later on in the budget. In the third section, you will see our, the participating school districts' operating budget payments for twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-two, twenty-three with a total of four, six, one, four, two, eight, three. That is an increase of one, three, eight, nine, four, three. I will now move on to page two. On page two, you will see the summary of the budget by object code, including the budgetary reserve, and there's a pie chart with further details. If you look directly below the pie chart, you will see the first column is the object, then you will see the second description, third, twenty-two, twenty-three budget, then fourth is the percent of the twenty-two, twenty-three budget, and then the fifth, twenty-one, twenty-two budget, percent of the twenty-one, twenty-two budget in the sixth column. And the last column's an increase or decrease. If it's in parentheses, it's a decrease. I will share some additional notes. As discussed and recommended by our JOC earlier in the year, the, the budgetary reserve does reflect an increase. It's important to note that the budgetary reserve is not initially billed to the participating districts. It is used for a capital emergency, and it'll be communicated to the JOC for approval. It's recommended to make this higher, and we chose to look at the budgeted breakpoint. So I will explain that to you. The budgetary reserve was thirty thousand dollars, has been since nineteen eighty-five. We do not have a fund balance here at the VOTAC. So that was thirty-seven years ago. And what we did was we adjusted it to current pricing inflation. The JOC at the school directed me to increase this to a more realistic amount for a possible capital emergency. We use the current breakpoint, which is eight, five, oh, four, oh. So the breakpoint is contrived from the current CPI, which is the Consumer Price Index, which you know. The calculation of the equipment cost over the breakpoint is based on specifications of Articles of Agreement. So that's part of why we bring that breakpoint up every year, and we, we, we decided that that calculation made the most sense. We didn't just pick an arbitrary number to go from thirty to eighty-five, oh, four, oh. Object one hundred includes salaries for all employees, while substitute pay contracted wage increases, which we have twenty-one employees for the contract, and that equates to approximately forty-three thousand dollars. Wage increases for employees not covered under the contract is approximately forty thousand dollars. Those are twenty-six employees. And in addition, we are budgeted to move a current non-contracted employee from two hundred days to two sixty. Object two hundred includes benefits such as medical dental vision, insurances, Piers' employer contributions, insurances for, as I just said, medical dental vision, and those are anticipated to increase a total of approximately seventy-eight thousand, six hundred dollars. Life insurance premium rates are on hold. Piers' employer contribution rate is increasing from three, four, nine, four to three, five, two, six percent. Object three hundred includes budgeted expenditures for our student information management system, solicitor fees, auditing services, and safety and security services that are contracted. Four hundred includes maintenance agreements and repair and equipment, inspections, sprinkler elevator water, cost projected decreases, maintenance on vehicles were completed the prior year. And we have fewer rental costs for our awards program. Object five hundred remained relatively consistent from prior year. The object code includes costs associated with traveling, advertising, including student transportation to clinics and competitions. When I say clinic students who go to Concordia or Sunny View and our health assistance program, our skills USA competitions, HOSO competitions, and then projected, let me back up, I apologize. Protected insurance premiums, general liability, property, auto, et cetera, and contracted services such as web hosting. Six hundred supplies includes projected expenditures for vocational program supplies, textbook software licensing, and just like everything else, there are increased costs to these consumables, food, lumber, and steel. And then also we're accounting for program enrollment increases. The additional increase in this object code is primarily a result of anticipated projects within the IT department. Seven hundred, equipment. This includes budgeted expenditures for equipment and vocational education programs, tech support services, operation and maintenance. And then nine, other use of funds, or I apologize, nine hundred figures above reflect the budget, the Perkins and the dot at expenditures, but I will explain that later on. I'm getting ahead of myself. Those are not billed to you, but they are part of the operating budget. And that's a lot I said. Anybody have any questions on this page?
I am not seeing anyone. Dr. Hyler, please continue.
Okay. Okay, thank you. On page three, we're gonna start on the top right portion. You'll see the anticipated revenues in this section. Social Security, retirement, interest are all standard. The state reimburses us fifty percent. And then I'd like to draw your attention again to the top right portion. The amount of two, six, seven, two, seven, six, two, six, seven, two, six, seven is the allocation for Perkins for this current school year. However, we aren't, we are not given the exact number that we are going to be granted for Perkins for the upcoming year, but we do use this to estimate. And again, we will use, again, your districts will not be billed for this amount, rather, it's included as part of our, our operations. On the top left part of your page, you'll see the average daily membership for the prior three years. According to our Articles of Agreement, we build up participating districts based on the three-year total average ADM, average selling membership. And we moved to page four. I'll get into that a little bit more for your specific school. On the bottom left portion, this shows the twenty-twenty status values, and these are derived from the Tax Equalization Board. The twenty-twenty-one instructional time reports come from your child accounting reports. And then to the bottom right, the twenty-twenty, twenty-twenty-one estimated secondary CTA subsidy is in this section. These percentages are used for estimating operating budget payments, which will be shown on page four. Page three flows into page four. So on page four, the top portion of the page depicts the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and the bottom depicts twenty-one, twenty-two. The first column is the, is the operating budget less the revenue that was just explained on the current page. We then deduct the state adjustment, and then we add the equipment back in over the breakpoint. So this is, this is just a budgeted expense. If you look where it says SV, or I apologize, Seneca Valley. And we will bill you according to the finalized information as it is received as per the final ADM, the vocational education subsidy and final benefit amounts. So if you look, the operating, operated budget less revenues for Seneca Valley is seven, two, five, seven, nine, eight. And that is an increase of five, eight, seven, five, one. The total operating budget payment increase from twenty-one, twenty-two to twenty-two, twenty-three for the districts again is one, three, eight, nine, four, three. And if you'd like to view, view further detail of the budget, which is organized by function and object, which means that we place items together by department, on pages five through ten, it goes through every single detail. Very last page, which you're all probably looking for, is the total operating budget proposal for twenty-two, twenty-three. We're looking at six, three, nine, zero, nine, two, four. With an increase of three point seven, nine, five, six, and that is from twenty-one, twenty-two for two, twenty-two, twenty-three. The budgetary reserve with that increase is four point six, seven. So to be clear, this is the overall increase, which includes Perkins, adult education, a sudden increase of the payment of the participating districts. As stated on page one, the participating school districts' operating budget payment is one, three, eight, nine, four, three. Everyone put together. Any questions or concerns?
Do any board members have any questions?
If I could just for a second, I guess, Dr. Hyler, thank you so much for that. We heard this, Mr. Peterson, I heard this last week. I guess the only comment I'd make to kind of bring this home to Seneca Valley is at the risk of oversimplifying, and Dr. Hyler and Ms. Bertner will tell you that this isn't a hundred percent true, but we, we, the two biggest things that impact what we pay the VOTAC are the VOTAC's budget, obviously, and how many kids we send to the VOTAC. And so if you, if you looked at our line in the payments, we're up about nine percent. We're planning to be up nine percent what we pay to the VOTAC next year. But we're up thirty percent this year in the kids that we're sending to the VOTAC. So of that nine percent, about two-thirds of it, six percent, is because we're sending more kids there, which is a good thing. And about three percent of it is kind of cost increase passed on to us from the VOTAC operating budget. So, Dr. Hyler, feel free to clean that up if necessary, but I think it's important to note that a large percentage of the increase that we'll pay is based on our increase in membership of students there.
Well, that is part of it. And at this point, we did estimate at one fifty-one. However, or whenever we started planning this budget, it was at one fifty-one. Give me one second. So you were at one, oh, two for twenty-one, twenty twenty and twenty twenty-one, and then up to one fifty-one. So we estimated this at the beginning of November for twenty twenty-one, and you had a hundred and fifty-four students as of October twenty-sixth. So we created a percentage prediction based on where, that you would end up one fifty-one, based on the last three years average going down to your final ADMs. But at this point, you are one forty-two. So your final cost will be a little bit different. It'll be a little bit less. Now, from there, the calculation is where it could get a little bit confusing, because there are times that, that people just want to know how much does it cost per student for my students to come there? And, and that's not anybody in particular. I've heard this many times. How much is it cost for a student to come to the VOTAC? So it is the three-year total daily average membership ADM. Then your assessed property value and instructional time and membership reports for equipment expenditures over the breakpoint, which is eight, five, oh, four, oh, for the twenty-two, twenty-three school year, and then the PA Secondary Career and Tech Ed subsidy allocation. That's delineated by district. So dividing a district's ADM could produce a per-student cost, but that's not always the correct cost. Because if you sometimes assuming that you add more students will increase the district share of the tuition, there are times that does, it is the way it is. Your, your enrollment or your cost goes up, your cost then goes up due to the enrollment. But there are times, because of how the pie chart kind of flows together, it depends on the other schools, what they're doing. So if a district were to increase their enrollment by ten percent, their share of the operating expenses will not increase by that amount if the other districts' ADMs increase as well. Conversely, if a district's share may increase without an ADM increase, which does happen, or perhaps even with an ADM decrease, provided the other districts' experience reduced ADMs also. So that's the tricky part of it. So I don't think, I don't think that cleaned that up, Mr. Jacobs. I hope I didn't make it more confusing. But when I look back at last year, when you were at one, oh, two in your ADM for nineteen twenty was one twenty-three, and then ADM for twenty twenty-one was one, oh, two. So you did go down from six, six, nine, six, six, two to six, five, oh, seven, eight, eight. So that did happen. But the calculation and putting it all together, it all depends on everybody else.
Yeah, that, I thank you for that. I, I think, kind of the way to think about it is the, the VOTAC operating budgets up around three point seven, payments to districts up around three percent, and anything we pay above that is based on increased participation relative to other districts.
There you go. Oh, my gosh. You should have just said that whole.
Record. Hopefully, I think Dr. Polano is recording that, so maybe I'll keep that for myself.
Please, keep it for me.
There we go.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Are there any other questions or comments on, on the VOTAC budget? Mr. Peterson, since I'm gonna call you out, since you're on the, on the Joint Operating Committee, so I'll call you out as well, sir. Oh, you're muted, Fred.
Thank you, Mr. President, twice. I, I think probably folks know that Dr. Hyler hosted a, a visit and a tour in celebration of, of School Board Week a couple of weeks ago. And it was probably my third or fourth tour that I've gone on. And every time I go there, it's like the first time, because there's so many things that are going on. It's, it's, it's really incredible. The the, the sort of sad part of that, though, is that when you do see students sitting around, it's usually because they're waiting. They're waiting to get into a certain activity, or they're waiting to get to a certain machine. And I, I, I know nobody ever likes to hear a budget increase, but I think any increase in this budget is well spent. We probably need to look at, and we had this discussion, each individual program to make sure that, if you think of it in terms of a product line, if you're in manufacturing, you want to make sure that each individual project or product line is, makes financial sense. And Dr. Hyler and, and Mr. Jacobs and I had that discussion, and that's gonna be a project coming up. The, the other thing that I would mention is it was just so cool. We went into building construction, and there was a little team of kids that were working away, and we got to talking to them. They're preparing for the competition. And as many times as I've been through this, I always struggle with, how do you have a competition in the VOTAC school? And the, the following Saturday, they were gonna meet with several other VOTACs. And at, at the, the start of the day, they had to build within, I think, four hours a bathroom. So they not only had to have the skills to, to bring together the materials they needed, read the plans, begin to assemble, but they also had to be able to work as a team, the electrician, the plumber, the carpenter. And, and I don't know how that competition came out, but it just made it so clear to me that this is the ultimate in applied learning. And, you know, that, that even though these kids are, are working with their hands most of the time, they're also working with their brain, and they're learning how to create the skills they need to go out into the world. My final comment, which I've made in the past, is we typically, in the days when we actually had, you know, meetings, Dr. Hyler would bring in the student of the month. And I, I think I can say every time that student presented, one of the follow-up questions, of course, was always, well, what are you gonna do when you leave the VOTAC? And, and virtually every one of those kids had a plan to go on, that the VOTAC wasn't the be-all and end-all. They were going to an apprenticeship somewhere. They were going into the military. The, the story I like to tell, which perhaps people have heard before, a young woman in cosmetology, her plan, when she finished getting her practical skills, she was gonna go. Her plan, when she finished getting her practical skills, she was going to go to I U P to get a degree in business. And her goal was to open a chain of salons. So that just says to me that what we're doing with the vote tech is not simply creating people with trade skills. But creating people who were going on to the working world to be successful. I, I couldn't be a bigger fan of the vote tech and the work that Dr. Hyler and her staff do.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Any other board member question, comment? Not hearing or seeing anyone, Dr. Hyler, I'd just like to say. You know, when it comes to this budget increase for the vote tech, I think it's one that, you know. It's, it's easy to vote yes for because you are doing so much up there and you're expanding the programs and, you know. I have no problem when we send more kids up to your program to have to pay more, it's one of those things that it's a success then that way. And we don't always like to spend more money, however, when we know that it's going to such a good program like yours and it's for our kids and, and the kids of all the county. We can't speak more highly of it. You know, I know, you don't always hear it, but, you know, Mr. Peterson, Mr. Jacobs always speak so highly of you. Dr. Vitell, when she was the superintendent of record, she always spoke highly of you as well, so. You're doing an amazing job up, up there and we are so happy to have you up there and Mr. Peterson again. Fred, are you there? Hope you're muted.
We're out there for the tour, Dr. Hyler gave us cards with the fifteen. Programs, and I don't know if we got those down here to hand out to. Our, our board members or not, obviously, we can't hand them out because you're not meeting in person, but. I, I, I would hope that we could distribute those somehow, so that all of our board members could see the offerings from the vote tech.
I will check with Mrs. Lomanson, see if she got those to the school at some point. And I'm unsure if they were given to you at this point, but I know she said that you wanted them.
I can confirm that we did receive them and I will, I will make sure that the school board gets them.
Thank you very much, Lisa. See if there's no other questions or comments, Dr. Hyler, I'll, I'll let you, you know, have a laugh, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I do have a question for Dr. Hyler. Just generally, how do we compare against other vocational schools, say in Western Pennsylvania or across the state as far as. Students that participate and the number of programs that we offer?
Well, I mean, I will tell you, we're the best, we always say that, I mean, that's clear. Well, the number, the number of certifications that we offer and that we actually. The students actually earn, we're usually number two or three in the state, but that report's always so behind. And it, the past couple of years, obviously, we all know, it's been kind of strange, so I can't give you real data. When it comes to how many students attend, that's a very good question, I know that we are at a, a very healthy. Active. Population, but in comparison, I really am unsure, but if we are more or less than some of the other. Vote texts, but I, or career tech centers, but speaking with Mercer and Lawrence and Allegheny County, we're all around the same. We, we may have a little bit more than most of those, but part of that is because of our three-year. Or the three pro, three session day, a lot of the other career tech centers are two. And there's a few that are comprehensive where they have their academics also, and that's a whole nother ballgame. And when it comes to the fifteen programs that we have, that seems to be a general number. At my four, at Lawrence County, there were twelve, when I, before I left, I added one more, there was thirteen, so it's. Around fifteen seems to be the number, but it would be interesting to see comparison, and now you have me interested, so I'm going to do that.
Thank you.
Thank you, are there any other board members? Scrolling. Dr. Hyler, I guess I will lead you now with the last word on, on the budget and anything you want to say in the vote tech, you got, you know. About a hundred of us here down at Seneca Valley on the line, so. I'll let you throw your pitch.
Thank you so much for the positive meeting and I, last thing I will say is, you're all welcome to come for a tour. I had another school contact me and their board's coming for tours, they got in front of you, but if you want to come down for a tour any day. We'll have a lunch and, and you could tour the school and see what my wonderful two J O C members have said that they've seen here at the school. The kids are great, Seneca Valley students are terrific, thank you for all your support.
Thank you again, Dr. Hyler, and good luck and we'll probably take you up on that sooner rather than later. Thank you. We are going to move on in our agenda now to the Pennsylvania School Board Association, P S B A advocacy. And I'm Miss Heather Scott, who is the P S B A advocacy ambassador. Will be joining us for a presentation, so Maria, I'm assuming that you're taking care of all that. And why can't I hear you?
Okay. I'm, I'm in, I don't, I don't see video, though, does anyone else, can you guys see me or no?
Not seeing you at this point, just here.
Give me a second, let me, there we go, is this it, maybe? Come on. Here we are, had it all set up before, okay. So, well, hello, everyone. Interesting, I'll see a couple of familiar faces, Mike Jacobs and Fred Peterson, I was on the, the vote tech J O C until just recently when I. Switched to backup in part because of my helping P S B A, so, good to hear all that good news is still going on. So again, thank you for having me, I am talking to you kind of on behalf of the P S B A, but more. To ask or to show you how you're able to help and some of the things that P S B A can do to help your district while you're also helping yourself. I know a lot of schools have. Kind of a tough relationship with P S B A, so I just kind of want to explain my part here. And we'll get into, I do have a presentation, I'll get into in just a second, but just to start, I started as a school board member, I'm in my third term now. And I got into it because I wanted to advocate for my own children, for my own district, just find ways to help. And, you know, put my money where my mouth is, if I didn't like something and wanted to make something happen, I felt I needed to get in there and do it. So it was advocacy, advocacy for me back then. And then I got into P S B A because I wanted to do something more than what I was doing with the board, I just felt like I wanted to keep pushing that. And so a lot of good things have, have come from that. And you are one of the schools, one of the programs that we have, I'm kind of going backwards here because it's you specifically. We have a program called Success Starts Here, and it is stories submitted by different schools showing some of the great things that they're doing. And Seneca Valley, you are one of the ones that is always submitting great things, so I see so many wonderful things and, you know, to hear about the. The academic team and, you know, the information with the foundation, it was all, that's really good to hear, so you're already well ahead of one part of my. One part of my presentation tonight, and that's just getting that good information out there about your school. So. You can go ahead and switch screens if you'd like for me, please, unless I'm able to do that, but I don't think, okay. So I'm just going to talk about advocacy and why it is so important to schools. There's a def, there's a dictionary definition, but just in terms of, of P S B A. Advocacy is the actions taken to influence the government decision-making. And that directly affects policy and funding change, two of the big things that we know are issues for school boards across the state, you know, across the country. But the reason school board members. Are good advocates as well, is because your efforts do help to impact those legislative decisions. There was a study done that took the opinions of several legislators and their staff as well, that said. Direct information from school board members, those in the trenches, those with the firsthand knowledge are some of the most counted on bits of information. That those legislators will use sometimes to help guide them in their decisions. Some are not, education's not the first thing that they are knowledgeable on, so they like to hear the information that you can share with them as well. The direct constituent interactions have much more influence on them. And that there's a high value on groups and citizens who have built relationships with the community, and that's what a school board is all about. And like I said, being in the Slippery Rock School Board myself, I do understand how important that is. So you'll see a little bit more here, I don't want to read the whole PowerPoint to you. But kind of the third one down, your efforts help to compete for limited resources, that's a good thing, we want the legislators to know. What you need for your school, what you have for your school, what's working, what could work better? And trying to get those funds that way, making it known, because otherwise they might assume that all schools need the same things, and that's not the case. Because we know schools in Pittsburgh are different from, you know, schools in Seneca Valley, from schools in Slippery Rock, they are all different sizes. Different populations and have different needs, so we want to make sure that you share information about your school. And that that helps you get the resources that you need. Some of the participation that you may have can result in funding. Tax policies, because we always know that our. Our constituents are taxpayers as well, so it's not just what happens in education, it's also what happens with the taxpayers. And then state and federal mandates and P D E regulations also are things that P S B A tries to affect. Okay, next one. So P S B A is statewide for all of the local school boards. They have, a lot of people don't understand exactly what they do, and they're legislating on behalf of the schools with an agenda that is put together. I always have to check my dates in this, I want to forget, I always forget. I believe it is. May timeframe, that, that's when the agenda is put together for the next year, that the P S B A will be working on. Talking to the legislators about supporting, really trying to get into their, into their information, so that they're aware of it. School boards are able to affect that, they can provide suggestions, once the tentative agenda is out, you can look at that and say, oh, these are some other things we should focus on, or that's not such a priority. So there is a way that you can affect it, but the P S B A does speak on behalf of all of the schools. And then it kind of trickles down in different ways, they, like I said, they'll propose some of the legislation, they'll react to things. They'll give information to the school boards and media from information they've gotten. A lot of times you'll get a call or an email saying, hey, we have a legislative alert, we'd like you to, to pay attention to. Maybe a vote's going down on the floor that is not beneficial to schools. One of the most recent ones that I can think of, that I know there was a lot of discussion, was having to put our entire curriculum online, having to address all of that and, you know, where's the line drawn to just how much information is out there? So there was a push on that to say, hey, let's, let's make this a, you know, something that we can handle, let's, let's not. Put everything in there, we don't need the, you know, the baby in the bath water and the kitchen sink and everything together. So that sort of thing, there's a call that goes out and say, please, reach out to your, to your legislators, let them know this is not something good for your district, that. The reasons that it won't work are legitimate and that you want to share those with them. And the advocacy ambassadors, there are eight of us, or, or eight or less fewer, depending on how many are. In the office right now, we have a few sharing, but we're out there across the state helping as well. We can go ahead to the next one. Please, thank you. The role that you play, and this is what I really want to stress as part of this whole presentation, is that you can do something more for your district than being on the board. Being an administrator, and I know many of you already are in good contact with legislators, you guys, like I said, are one of the districts that are very proactive. With everything, but as board members too, you have knowledge, you know about your district, you know about your students, you're part of the community, so you know about the community outside of the school. You're credible, you've been elected, maybe re-elected. You, again, you've got that firsthand knowledge and you've been able to, to use that to affect decisions. You're visible as a board member, some of you might be very visible in the community outside of the board as well. And those are always good things, and it all, all of those together show your commitment to the children and to the community. And then all of those, they give you clout, they really do, if a legislator hears from someone that has all of that background. They are really likely to sit up and listen, whether it's something you're talking about that they have no knowledge on. You become the expert for them, you're the one who knows the information and is passing it on. If it's something they know about, maybe they just don't understand exactly how it affects all of the schools, so you need to let them know your take on things, what your board sees. For that legislation, is this good, is it bad, could it just need some revision? So you really do have the clout and you really can make a difference with that, and this is kind of one of my favorite slides because it just really. Kind of brings home what board members can do themselves. And all of this can be done, and this isn't on the, on the PowerPoint anywhere, all of this can be done through an email, a phone call, an in-person visit if you have time. In the fall, we do a virtual advocacy day, it's about fifteen-minute-long meetings set up with different legislators, you can sign up to join, you can join one meeting, three meetings, however many. Of your legislators show up, you can, you can participate in those, you just take a few minutes, share the good things your school's doing, share the concerns that you have. Again, in the spring, we have advocacy day in person, I've been on this job two years, this will be the first one I get to go to in person. Thank you, COVID, so I'm kind of excited about that, and we'll be meeting in person with the legislators. But not everyone has that time, so phone calls, emails, virtual, it's all a good way to get your voice heard and to get that relationship going with the legislator. Okay, next slide, please. Just to put some faces to the job that we are all people, most of us here have been board members, superintendents, or some. Other administrator at a school, so everyone who is an ambassador at one point or another has been very involved with education and understands. Where you're coming from, when you have questions and when you have concerns. Okay, next one. Show them what it takes program, this is a great one, I think you have had legislators into your school in the past. But this is when they come visit the school, just a short, maybe an hour-long, ninety-minute-long visit. You can share your good stories, you can share your concerns. And the reason you want to host them is because, again, you're the first level of knowledge about your district, so you want to provide the information about your district. And it makes it personal because it says the legislator's own constituents and not just an abstract. Seeing the children's faces, seeing the buildings, the staff, it creates a connection there that helps, again, when you pick up the phone and call or send a. An email or a tweet and say, hey, think about this. There's a connection there and that's a good, a good way to keep your information at the top of their mind. Okay, next one, please. Okay, and these, I'm just gonna, they're just a couple of different things here about just building relationships with them, just kind of good ways to, to reach out to the legislators and how to stay in touch with them. We can go on to the next one. That'll be a quick one, too. Yep, same sort of thing. The bottom one here, if their votes or actions don't reflect your positions, tell them respectfully, of course, why not? I do want to comment on that just briefly to say, when you are reaching out. To a legislator, you need to make sure that you're reaching out and making it very clear, are you speaking to them as a member of the Seneca Valley School Board? Or are you speaking to them as, you know, Kathy Whittle, school board member, just individual in the community? Because if you're speaking as a board member, you need to make sure that you're speaking. For what the board feels, should be that the information that's shared, that, that what the board has come to a consensus on. If you're speaking individually, just make sure you're letting them know that, because your personal opinion could be different than the board's, and that does happen quite often. Okay, next one, please. These are some resources to look up, if you're speaking to someone and you don't have information off the top of your head, you can look these up, you can refer them to the, to the legislator. Or it can give you a chance to do some legwork ahead of time. The three first ones, the additions are all emails that come out, the legislative alerts and action alerts I mentioned a little bit before. Website, tons of information on the P S B A website. Social media, we have social media, legislators have social media and they do, they do look at those as well. I think Twitter seems to be the big one right now, but there are some on Facebook as well. There's a state of education report we put out, closer looks, other research, and then a new section in P S B A is the Keystone Center for Charter Change. So if you are interested in, you know, how charters are working, how it's affecting your funding, all of those sorts of things, that is a great place to get some information there. Okay, next one, I think I'm about done with these, we're, we're getting there, okay. And this is just how the platform works for the P S B A's legislative platform. The dates, May to July, every year is when boards, that would be you, can submit any changes to last year's platform, can suggest items. Then the platform committee will meet over the summer and into the fall, the delegate assembly meets, and then the final platform for the following year is published in November. So you'll see that that's kind of a link, a highlight of the website so that you can see the information. Submit any changes and how you can get what works for your school on the agenda. Okay, next, please. I mentioned advocacy day, the spring one is our in-person in Harrisburg. Action alerts, I mentioned those, show them what it takes, those are wonderful visits and hopefully, you know, we can coordinate some more for you guys in your building. Or buildings that we can get them in, but I, again, I do know there's a good relationship with your, with your district and the legislators. Editorial actions, those are always good to write, success starts here, that was what I mentioned at the very beginning, that you, you are excellent at doing, is those positive stories about your students, your staff, your administration, the district. Whatever they might be, you're really good at sharing those on the website, successstartshere.org, so keep that up, those are always wonderful to see. Next, please. And again, charter reform, I forgot to check to see if you had done a resolution for it, but again, if that's something you're interested in. You can reach out to me, I can get you a copy of the resolution to complete, or you can check out the charter change website. And the next one, and I think I have two things, I think the next one's my final one. Yes, I just have two other things I wanted to mention real quick, actually I did mention that one. And the last one, I just wanted to say again, for the success starts here. This is one, it's a multi-year, multi-school platform and it really is good because the legislators are seeing those, they are reading them. When they come up, we do try to, to tweet them out to legislators and tag them or put them on Facebook so that they can see those specifically. And they want to see, you know, as much as you want the money to make the things happen, they want to see what the money that they send your way is doing. And that's a really good way to do that, short of having them in your school or a virtual town hall, which is another option as well. So that is all that I'm going to throw at you. If you have any questions, please feel free to ask away. I know I say a lot and you guys got some handouts ahead of time as well, so.
Thank you, Ms. Scott, are there any questions for Ms. Scott? Looking around and I am not seeing any.
Usually aren't. So.
There's a lot of information, so we do appreciate it and taking the time and getting you scheduled in here, I'm glad you reached out about this.
Yeah, I appreciate it, wonderful. And yeah, if anyone does have any questions, you can reach out to me, my information is on the website, I believe it is on some of the papers that I sent earlier that you would have gotten in your packets. So you should be able to find me pretty easily if you have any questions, but um, again, love to have you helping with advocacy. It's all about the kids and our communities and our districts and the more more advocates we have on our side, the better. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, I will, I will depart the meeting and leave you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, bye bye.
Bye. We will move on then to the next item on our agenda, which is Care Solace, Dr. Roberts, please.
Good evening, board members. I have just a couple of things to share with you about an agreement that is on the agenda for next week for consideration. A contract with Care Solace, so let me tell you just a little bit about that. And to start, I'll share with you one of the phrases that we throw around in education quite a bit. And that is Maslow before Bloom. So Maslow's hierarchy of needs, we need to make sure that kids are sheltered and safe and fed before we can really address their academic needs. And this is one of those moments where I'm going to be talking to you about mental health. And certainly the pandemic has amplified the needs for mental health supports across society and certainly schools are not immune to that. And I think it's appropriate, since this is National School Counselors Week, to give a shout out to all of them. And, and for me to say that I'm certainly very fortunate to work with them in this district. And we oftentimes think of our school counselors as being mental health counselors. But it's good to set the record straight, especially for the public that's joining us tonight. That our school counselors work in three domains, in the academic domain, supporting the schooling that's going on, study skills. Kids getting the right credits to move on toward graduation, all of those pieces. Next, they work in the career exploration and development realm. And for that, our students are learning the skills and, and establishing what they would like to be as they transition from Seneca Valley onward. And then lastly, in the social emotional learning realm. And for that, our counselors help students learn about kindness, learn about cooperation, learn about being an advocate for themselves, all of those things. And to a lesser extent, supporting our kids as they develop good mental health in life. And certainly, our students have, or rather, our counselors have risen to meet the need for social emotional needs and mental health in the district. But I should say that they are not certified mental health counselors. So their role is, is different than what you might think of if you were to go to a counseling office for, for specifically mental health or perhaps substance use council, something along those lines. In this case, they do referrals and those referrals would go out to perhaps our in-school therapy or also could go to out, out of school therapy providers as well. And that's where the real challenge comes in. As you can imagine right now, it's very difficult for our, our school counselors to be able to stay up on which providers are accepting patients, which providers have waiting lists, which providers accept which insurance, all of those things are challenges. I'm going to briefly share my screen just so you can see a visual as I'm talking through the rest of this, so you can kind of understand how Care Solace plays a role. Let me just scroll down just a little bit, all right. So the Care Solace group that I'm going to share with you this evening is a mental health care coordination service. One of the challenges that our counselors have right now is being able to keep up with which providers, as I mentioned, are seeing patients. Who would be best suited for which particular student's needs, all of those things are real challenges for our counselors. So in order to make this a little bit easier for our counselors and to be able to get help to students at the moment of need. Care Solace has partnered with 4,000 schools, 3 million students. They have also partnered with those 3 million students, almost 12 million staff and families to be able to provide support when there's a need for families. The way Care Solace works is the district staff would provide a referral and they then would, Care Solace would then work with those outside providers to be able to find the right connection and the right counselor for the student's need. As you can see on this slide, there's quite a, quite a difficult road from the left, the person that has the need to the person who can provide the need, look at all of the different things that are in the way. And you start to get a sense of how challenging this is for a school counselor when they're already juggling the other things that are required of them. And they certainly do their best, but you can see there's quite a few things that make this very challenging. Care Solace is able to eliminate those difficulties because this is what they do, they find providers and they match them to families in need. And the nice thing about it is they're also customizing those matches, so they're finding a male counselor, a male counselor is what the families ask for, they're asking, they're finding a female counselor when that's what the family is asking for. They're providing a counselor that speaks the language of the particular student that's involved. They're able to match students and families with the appropriate medical insurance, whether it's private insurance or Medicaid or sliding scale provider or perhaps a faith-based provider, those are all things that Care Solace is able to do. And the whole process really is captured by this slide. And you can see there's this warm, warm handoff and that is our school counselor giving the name of the parent and the phone number to the care companion and that care companion that works for Care Solace is able to connect them with the appropriate need and the appropriate provider that would meet that need. They also have a care matching system, which is an anonymous search because we understand that families might be private about the help that they're seeking out and may not want to come to the school to ask for help about an addiction issue or to ask for help about something else that's very personal to them. So Care Solace also provides a way for us to connect families that have those needs and can call a 1-800 number if they're looking to make connections that way. With Care Solace, we would have a customized page that would be local for Seneca Valley and families and students. And I should mention staff and their families can also contact Care Solace for support. So here's the whole process in a nutshell, the person that's looking for help making a quick match, making follow-up calls, facilitating appointments and transition to care and the person getting help. So what Care Solace does through telephone, through email text, through email or texting, makes connections for the family so that they can quickly find a provider that's going to meet their need. We understand in this day and age that there's wait lists, that there's backups, that there's lags in care. Care Solace is really a great provider for us because they have a wider net. So we know the folks that are in our direct community in Zillian Opal and in Harmony and in Evan City and in Seven Fields and in Cranberry. But Care Solace would be able to connect students more regionally as well. So let's say that there's a telehealth provider that's in Clarion or another telehealth provider that's in Slippery Rock. Perhaps that would be a good match for the student to be able to see someone at the moment in need. And that would be a connection that they could make very, very quickly. So it certainly widens the, the provider base that students and families can connect to. And this is an opt-in situation, so families don't need to take advantage of this. And I should mention at this point that this is also a situation where this would not affect our in-school therapy program. So if there's a family that sees in-school therapy as being appropriate, perhaps transportation's a difficulty, perhaps they have a specific insurance need, we would continue to be able to refer them to our in-school therapy program. But one of the advantages we see is that wait lists would get shorter on our in-school therapy program because more folks would be able to find help immediately as an outside provider. And the truth is, outside providers can sometimes be a better match because there's a variety of providers. Where in, in, in school therapy, there's one therapist in that school building and that person may or may not be the perfect match for a particular student's need. So with that, I'm going to stop sharing the screen and ask the board if they have any questions or comments. Are there any questions, Mr. Hester?
Dr. Roberts, thank you so much for sharing that, you know, I knew that program existed, but I didn't know to what extent of the offerings we have, I mean, it's incredible, I appreciate you sharing it with us. How, how have we, there's 103 people on our, our Zoom meeting today, but how have we marketed that or let people know that program exists? And what do they have to do to be involved or to get the help they need?
Excellent question, so this is on your agenda for approval, so this is not a partnership that we have yet. So I'm just sharing with you what it could look like for Seneca Valley. If the board approves this partnership at the board meeting next week, then we would be able to have this be live at the beginning of March, so in about three weeks' time, we'll be able to have all these pieces up and running. And I see it as a great asset to our school counselors and to our whole community because it's, as I mentioned before, it is everybody in the family. So if the, if they have an 11th grader and their college student is having difficulty, it's available to them. If they have a sixth grader and mom also needs support, this is an avenue that's available to them. And again, I mentioned it, all of our staff and all of their immediate family as well would be eligible to participate.
Thank you, Mr. Hester, any other questions or comments? Seeing.
To Leo, I would also add that for next week, when the board votes on this, we will be using federal funding, S R funds for this program.
Thank you for that clarification. Dr. Roberts, I'm going to guess that it's not the easiest thing to find companies like this. Just because we know that finding providers has been difficult for folks. You know, having a resource like this available, I'm sure that there's not, you know, millions of companies out there to choose from. So I'm glad you were able to find one out. I guess my question's going to be, you know, Care Solace, you know, they, they do have what seems to be a nice network setup. Why, why did you choose them to bring to us?
Excellent question, so what sets them apart for, for my thinking is they're 24/7, 365. So a family that has a need in July or a family that has a need over Christmas vacation, they're not navigating the very difficult mental health process that exists in this country. They're able to access help at the moment that they need it. I love also that there is an opportunity for our school counselors to see the referral process, so they can see that the family's been matched and they can see whether or not the student is able to get into that appointment and whether it was a good appointment or not. We never have any exposure to what the need is or what the student is perhaps talking to the therapist about, that's all private and separate from us. But we do have the opportunity, if the school counselor makes the referral, to be able to see the process and to be able to support the family as they're seeking out help. So there, there is really nothing like this anywhere in this part of the country, this is a California company. But their care companions are regional, so they're in Pennsylvania and neighboring states to be able to provide this service for us. And they're multilingual, so we don't have a large population of students that speak other languages as a native language, but we also have a lot of parents that do. And I think that's a great asset for us as well.
Thank you very much, Ms. Whittle.
Thank you, Dr. Roberts, this is, this is amazing. As I think we know, mental health, it's this vicious cycle, there's not a lot of providers out there, they reach for help, they maybe end up in the hospital. They come back home, they don't get the support back and it's this vicious cycle, it keeps going around and around. Do we have or have they, how will this be measurable from our standpoint? Like, I know it's kind of hard to put a number or quantitative like measure, but will there be some like kind of follow-up, a successful match? And then there's, is there a timeframe, like if you put a referral and did they give you, you know, this should be within seven days, 10, you know, five business days?
So I, I think there's a couple of advantages, one, because they work 24/7, they're making matches even overnight while, while folks are sleeping. So, you know, you'll wake up the next morning, you'll have a text message from Care Solace that, you know, they've made a match and or they're going to make a text message and say, we have a follow-up question, the provider was wondering if, you know, you're open to a female therapist or a male therapist. So there's that kind of 24/7 piece really helps in speeding that up. They say that a family would be matched within 72 hours, which is unbelievable. Now, there still could be a couple of days or a week wait in order to get in to see that therapist, but at least you have already got that appointment, you've got kind of that release to say, okay, you know, we're moving along in this process. And, you know, some of the situations that, that our families encounter are really scary. And if it's a crisis situation, the Care Solace companion can actually dial in with the National Suicide Prevention Hotline and connect right there in the moment, which I think is fantastic, that we're not leaving folks wondering what to do or how to be able to, to get appropriate help. I also love that it makes connections for addiction. We have students that, that struggle with, you know, addiction to nicotine and vaping, a number of other things as well. And I think this provides a great space for folks to be able to get help that way.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Whittle, Mr. Peterson, did I see your hand go up earlier?
Yeah, thank you, Dr. Roberts. I'm having a little problem getting in focus, the accessing the system. It sounds like one way is to be referred through a school, employee school counselor or teacher or whatever. Can a student or a family member make a direct access to Solace?
Excellent question, so you, you identified two different ways, there's a completely anonymous way and I could be accessing that help for myself or it could be accessing that help for my child. And that's completely separate, the school has no metrics to be able to measure how many times that has been accessed. Same thing would be true for an employee, even if a school counselor would make the referral for an employee as an adult, we just feel like that's a, that's a privacy issue we don't want to look at. What we would see on the school side is if the school counselor makes the referral, they would be able to see in the process whether the child's been matched or not and whether that was a good match. We would also be able to collect on an aggregate basis what kinds of referrals, so is the need based on depression, is the need based on anxiety? So we would be able to see as a district that, and we would be able to see how many students were matched this month or next month or, or over the past year. So it will give us some access to be able to see, you know, perhaps there's things that we can do on a curricular basis to support kids even better.
So if a student who hasn't reached the age of majority accesses Solace, how do the parents get looped in?
So that care companion would, would work with the student, kind of assess the situation and establish what would be necessary. So we would be reaching out for, or I would say we would be, but Care Solace would be reaching out for insurance information and if the child doesn't have insurance, they could reach it back out to the school and we can make a connection for Medicaid or whatever would be necessary, value, value behavioral, et cetera.
Okay, maybe I wasn't, didn't ask my question correctly. I'm trying to understand how if a, if a student, a younger student accesses the system directly Solace, how does Solace ensure that the student's parents or guardian gets wrapped into the loop?
Gotcha. And that would just be if they're accessing anonymously, then, and they would be filling out a questionnaire about who they are and a phone number and things like that. So Care Solace would be calling them to, to make that connection, saying we want to include mom or dad or guardian with, with this connection. So it's not going to, not going to proceed without involvement of the family.
Thank you. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Looking around, seeing them. Thank you very much, Dr. Roberts. We look forward to seeing more next week.
Thank you.
We're going to move on to our agency reports. We're going to start with VOTEC. Mr. Peterson and Mr. Jacobs, is there much more that you have other than the budget?
I do not have any more, Mr. DeToyo.
Thank you very much. Mr. Peterson, you're muted, Fred.
Three strikes and you're out, Fred.
Good. Technology and etiquette to composing, to competing concepts. I do not have anything further on the VOTEC.
All right. Thank you very much. And I guess I'm going to ask this question because I didn't earlier. I hate to put you guys on the spot, but not really. I'm assuming that you are both recommending that we approve the budget presented today, correct?
Yes.
Thank you very much. All right, we'll move on to the IU update. Don't have much. I was actually on vacation. I didn't attend a meeting. However, the budget was approved and I will be thinking that in the next month, we will get it presented to us. You know, whether or not we are going to have an actual presentation or not is left to be determined. My recommendation is going to be that we approve it. So, you know, if there's anyone that that wants to see Dr. Kilmeier come down or and present something, just let me know. If not, you know, I can answer any questions, but I was pretty integral in making sure that the the budget was acceptable. So just an FYI for everyone. We'll move on to the WHIPULE update and Mr. Hester, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Every two years, the PIAA and WHIPULE do a reclassification. It's based on schools getting bigger or smaller and making sure they stay competitive in whatever area they are. Typically, that doesn't affect Seneca Valley at all because we're 6A and we're not going down. And there's no place for us to go up. So we continue to stay in the same classification as always. However, it has affected us in a in a sense that there were eight schools involved in the new reclassification. It goes down to five. So three schools are dropping down. Because of that, the football schedule for next year has not been completed yet. So within the next month or so, Ms. Lewis will present that to us, along with marking the calendar for homecoming and that type of thing. But that's done every two years and whatever classification you are, you stay in for two years until the the next classification comes through. And that is all I have.
Thank you very much, Mr. Hester. Are there any questions for Mr. Hester? Thank you. We'll move on then to the legislative update and let me pull up my notes here. So and of course, my screen froze, but that doesn't matter. I'll start. So the the legislature was back in Harrisburg today for the first time. And so they they didn't have much going on, but since our last meeting, there was a few different things. So Senate Bill 324, now Act One of 2022, was signed by the governor. This is a new law which is effective immediately. And it's intended to help keep students who are either experiencing homelessness or are in foster care, stay on track to graduate high school. Public school entities must designate a point person for the student who are reviewed past transcripts and provide support and resources needed to help the grad or help that student graduate on time. So it'll be something that'll be good for everyone in the Commonwealth. The second one the governor signed was House Bill 253, which is now Act Two of 2022. And it establishes a task force on the opioid abuse epidemics impact on children. The bill was also amended in the Senate to distribute $225 million from the COVID response restricted account for hospitals and retention and recruitment of healthcare workers. The House concurred in the Senate amendment and the bill was sent to the governor who signed into law and it was also effective immediately. The governor vetoed House Bill 2146. This is a congressional federal redistricting map. The Supreme Court will now have a hearing on the issue, which is scheduled for February 18, which is three days past the date for the candidates to circulate petitions. And so that will most likely lead to a delay in our primary this year. The redistricting process has to be completed this year so that the November general election can take place since Pennsylvania has lost a federal House seat from the 2020 census data. Also, Pennsylvania House and Senate redistricting final map was approved on Friday by the Legislative Reaffirmation Commission. The new map is different from the preliminary map that was passed in December and changes the representation of Butler County. The preliminary map had us consolidating the three districts. And it's now going to be four districts under the map approved on Friday. Two of the districts will cross the county lines in Lawrence and Mercer counties. The previous map that we were under, which was from 2012, had Butler County being part of seven, seven different districts. And we had representatives that were overlapping in five counties. So we were sharing with Armstrong, Beaver, Lawrence, Mercer and Vanango County. So we've consolidated dated the representation a little bit, which is a good thing. It's not as good as what they had in December, but it's still, you know, something that's good for us. The other thing that I forgot to mention is tomorrow, we will also be seeing the governor and he'll make his budget presentation. So that'll be interesting. And I encourage everyone to to watch that and read about it. We'll see. There's supposed to be more education funding. We'll see how it goes. And then that starts the whole process of what's actually approved. Finally, I'd like to talk about the Peasor investigation. On Monday, January 31, the Peasers Board was presented with the final internal investigation report on risk share in the Harrisburg properties. This is the investigation, which was completed by Wambel Vaughn Dickinson, who presented the report. This investigation took nearly a year to complete. The final report found no criminal action in states, and I'll quote from the report. "We found no evidence of any kickbacks or illegal payments. We found no evidence of theft. We found no evidence of self-dealing. We found no evidence of false statements or misleading statements in financial transactions." So that was all good news for the Peasor system. The report and all of the exhibits, which is a total of 288 pages, is available on the Peasers website. So folks that want to see it or any of the board members, you know, it's a 28 meg document or I'd email it if you wanted. It's easier just to go download it from the site. And finally, the Department of Justice and SEC investigations are still, as far as we know, ongoing. But again, those have not produced any criminal or civil charges. So that is the legislative update, including the Peasor update incorporated into it. So are there any questions on any of those items?
Mr. President, I did have one clarification.
Please.
I just wanted to make sure you did state that that report, the Peasers report is public. Anybody can go in and look at it?
That is correct. What happened after the presentation, it was voted to be public. What had to happen before it released to the public, there are some names that need to be, names and titles that need to be redacted because of Simon Wright's potential litigation. So that's why it couldn't be presented in public and had to be through to the board first. Then, you know, certain things had to be redacted for, you know, legal reasons. And then it was published. I think I'm gonna tell you that the presentation finished up at 5:00 and it was posted by midnight or thereabouts. So it was in that same area. But it is public.
Thank you for that.
No problem. Any other questions or comments? Right? Let's move on then. In your backup, you will find the financial reports for operations, senior high activities, intermediate high activities, middle school activities, athletics, food services, tax collection reports and capital project funds. And I'm sure if you have any questions you have or will direct this to Ms. Partner. So that's going to take us to our COVID-19 update. Dr. Vitell, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll start with some of the more broader views of data that the board has asked me to present. The Pennsylvania COVID numbers are all down significantly, all very good news. Those are publicly available on the DOH website. Then I drill down to Butler County. Again, those numbers are significantly down. We use the COVID-19 Early Warning Monitoring System Dashboard that looks at multiple criteria. As a matter of fact, it looks at six different data points. And then it compares that data to the previous seven days and the most recent seven days is what Pennsylvania Department of Health does with this data. And we've been following this for almost two years. The differences in confirmed cases in the most recent seven days, which is the seven-day time period of January 28 to February 3, which is four days ago. So as you know, you know, that some of this data is still behind and we're expecting these numbers to fall even more this Thursday. But the most recent seven-day period, January 28 through February 3, as compared to the previous seven-day period, January 21 through January 27 in Butler County, the difference in confirmed cases comparing those two seven-day periods, Butler County is down by 466 cases in one week. The incident rate is down to 455. We have seen lower. But again, this this strain can't exactly be compared to Alpha or Delta. The PCR percent positivity rate is down to 22.9%. The state PCR percent positivity rate in comparison is at 18.4%. We are slightly higher, but those are much, much better numbers than what we saw in January. The difference in the average daily number of COVID-19 hospitalizations, and these numbers are pulled from the Butler Health System, the system in one week is down by five. And then I receive a separate report from the Butler Health System. And they are trending around 40 inpatients, down from 50 the week prior. They're reporting that staffing is much better when it comes to absentees and illness with their staffing, much, much better. They did unfortunately report two to three deaths over the weekend. But again, their numbers are trending in all the right directions and they are back to non-emergent surgeries at Butler Health System. On my 2:00 call, we're also looking at a report from UPMC every Monday, and they're down to 109 patients, COVID patients in the ICU. They told me today that that is less than half of where the peak was last year. They're down by 50%. So that that's really great news. Those UPMC numbers are not reflected in the early warning dashboard for Butler County, but I wanted to share those. The percent of hospital emergency department visits in the most recent seven days due to COVID-like illness in Butler County is up slightly by 0.7%, but the difference in the average daily number of patients, I'll remind you, is down. And the average daily number of COVID-19 patients on ventilators in Butler County is down. That is all very good news for the data. The next data point the board typically asks me to report on is one of the most important data points in my view, and that is what are our cases at Seneca Valley? At Seneca Valley, we are at 13 active student cases as of this afternoon. Usually Monday, we see a spike because of testing over the weekends that parent, over the weekend, that parents aren't reporting until Sunday night or Monday morning. I have not seen a number like this in a long time, so I'm very pleased to report 13 active student cases, only 16 students K to 12 quarantining and four active staff cases for a total of 17 cases in the entire district out of 7,000, nearly 7,300 students as well as nearly 900 employees. These are really good numbers and I'm very pleased to report those to you. They can be broken out. They are broken out on our COVID-19 dashboard. And you will see they're spread out across the district. In some buildings, we don't have any cases. Evan City Middle School, 5, 6, 0 cases of students, one staff case, Conde quinnesing Valley Elementary, zero student cases, one staff case. In many buildings, we have zero staff cases. Our staffing is also back to normal levels. And we're very pleased to report that, just as Butler Hospital is seeing their staffing returning to a much better staffing level. The next item that the board asked me to report on, and this one is tougher to get a handle on, but it's the data that I have, and that's vaccination status. We're reporting in our Seneca Valley School District staff, our total count divided by our vaccine count, approximately 74% of the adult staff in our district are fully vaccinated. I'm not able to pull out the boosters yet. And remember, there is no requirement for the employees to get vaccinated. There is no requirement for our employees to report they've been vaccinated. So those that are voluntarily reporting, we have 74% of them fully vaccinated. In the 2122 school year so far, we also have 190 employees who have had COVID. And last year, we had 105 for a total positive COVID number of 286 out of 864. That speaks to some level of natural immunity. I'm not an epidemiologist, but I I you know, I think we have to be looking at that number as well. However, if there are vaccinated folks who did get COVID, we do have some adults reporting to us that they didn't get the booster or they did and also got COVID. Those numbers could be overlapping. I've no way of separating those. But I point out those positive cases because there is some level of natural immunity there. Student vaccination rates at CVE were sitting at 12.7%. At Evan City Elementary, 9.7%. Hayne Elementary, 10.7%. Rowan, 23.5% students vaccinated. Evan City Middle School, 12.6%. Hayne Middle School, 13.4%. RGMS, 32.2%. IHS Senior High, 32%. So you see the bigger jumps closer to the 30, 32% in the secondary buildings. Overall, K to 12, we have about 22.3% of our students fully vaccinated. We also, again, report out to you, the board, at your request, the total positive student cases and the total positive student cases from last year. So the total positive student cases this year in our district, those that are positive for COVID and report it to our school nurses, they may have it and not report it, but those that are voluntarily reporting are sitting at 1,226 of our students out of 7,386. And last year, we had 399 students. So we have seen a much higher spike of students getting COVID so far this school year. But I'm pleased to report, based on the qualitative reports given to us by our nurses, that we've seen little to no severe cases of COVID with our students this year. More of them are getting it, but they have not been hospitalized, to our knowledge. I mean, there could be students that were hospitalized that did not share it with our nurses, but we have no knowledge of any students being in the hospital with this strain of COVID. And so those are all pretty good numbers that we are pleased to report. The next data point that often the board asked me to report is the testing availability. We have seen the first two weeks of January and in the month of December, significant shortages in testing availability, where parents wanted to get their children back and could not find tests. They could not find in-home tests. They could not find PCR tests. They could not find appointments in our pharmacies or in our testing centers. There was a severe backlog. I'm pleased to report that we are no longer seeing that. There is significant testing availability now. And many families have purchased in-home tests that are now widely available in our regional pharmacies. And many have also received the federal shipment of the in-home tests. So the testing availability is much better. Because of all of these new data points, well, before I get there, there's one other that the district, the board always asks me to report, and I need to pull this giant spreadsheet we've been keeping for two years. And that is where the Department of Health is reporting out how many total cases in each of our ZIP codes. We then data mine that every day and keep our own spreadsheet to see what is changing. And I'm pleased to report that in our ZIP codes, we're seeing much better numbers and and very few cases of COVID in our ZIP codes. And those ZIP codes that we take a look at are Calery, Cranberry Township, Evan City, Harmony, Mars. Some of our students, and you might say, well, that's Mars School District. No, the Mars Post Office does. We do have students that live where the Mars Post Office would service them and they would have a Mars address, but they live in the Seneca Valley School District in our boundaries. We also look at Renfrew as a ZIP code and Zillion Opal as a ZIP code. And from 25, February 5 through February 7, so when we pulled that data this morning, we only saw 76 cases over three days. And again, remember, this data is lagging as well. On 24, when we pulled the data, we only saw 12 cases in all of our ZIP codes. On 23, 27, on 22, 21, and and the numbers, you know, we were seeing numbers in December, well over 200. So to see days coming up with 12 or 20 is very good when it when it, when we look at data points. So I wanted to share that with you. Now, the board has asked us also as administration to track the CDC thresholds. So when we track all of these different zip code numbers, when we track the incident rate in our zip codes, when we track it at a fourteen day rolling average, we track it at a seven day rolling average. We also track the county. Now, the CDC thresholds that the board put in place in August are thresholds that are driven and numbers chosen by the CDC, not the Seneca Valley School District. As we sit today and this data is from yesterday because they haven't, they won't report today's data until tomorrow. We are sitting at Butler County's seven day incident rate of six eighty four. That's adding all seven days up. That's a ruling average. Butler County incident rate of a seven day total per one hundred thousand constituents is at three sixty four cases. So the CDC still has us listed as being in high transmission. But we know based on this local data and this zip code data we track that these numbers are going to continue to go down and go down fast. So we're very pleased to report that. I was hoping that we would be in moderate by tonight for the CDC thresholds, but we are not. But knowing and watching where this data is going, we as an administrative team put some recommendations in place for the board to consider and to deliberate this evening. And so Dr. Polano, if you would share your screen, please. And this is basically, this is a draft. The board can change this. The board can come up with their own recommendation. But the board has asked me through the board president to develop a timeline for easing the pandemic mitigations. Just like we have a layered approach coming in to the pandemic. Having a layered approach coming out, maybe not out of a pandemic per se. But with these numbers, while we're seeing them drastically decrease and we are pleased about this. It is time we start lifting some of these mitigations in our opinion. And so what you'll see here is the first area that we pulled out of your return to school health and safety plan. In the cafeteria on the left, you see the current mitigation strategies. And on in the center column, the proposed changes, things like max, we will maximize space between students while eating will remain a priority. However, additional spaces will no longer be required to be utilized to accommodate for increased distancing between students. Physical barriers such as Plexiglas will no longer be utilized as a mitigation strategy unless or until a rationale for doing so is deemed appropriate. The use of reusable food service items will be restored and disposable food service items will be used as needed. This, these recommendations are based on the data and what we know of the ever evolving changes in the science as related to COVID. The action, we would be asking you to take action next Monday, effective for next Tuesday. If you wanted that timeline to be more aggressive and you wanted this to take place tomorrow, it could, it would just take us a little bit of time to rearrange furniture. And it would take some logistics. So the timeline is up to the board. We can be as aggressive with lifting these mitigations as you choose. Or we can recommend the timeline here that we've recommended with February fourteenth, next Monday being your next board meeting. Uh, Dr. Polano, if you could go to the next item. The universal wearing of mask, we would be recommending as of February fourth, two options. This plan also has been run through our lead school nurse administrator, who was on the call with us tonight, Nurse Williams and Dr. Polano. So Dr. Polano and Nurse Williams, if you could tag team this to talk about the options that we are giving the board for consideration for next Monday.
So these options could be used in isolation or could be presented together. The first option moves from the substantial or high transmission levels as defined by the CDC, which does require masking currently in our health and safety plan. The new language could read that face masks will be required of all individuals while in any district building during the school day. While Butler County's level of community transmission is high, as defined by the CDC. When Butler County is in substantial, moderate, or low levels, as defined by the CDC, face masks will be strongly recommended, but not required. In addition, a disclaimer was added to avoid fluctuating between masking requirements once the metric is met. Because there is a possibility that we could meet a metric during one seven day period and then not meet the metric during the seven day period, the following seven day period. So to avoid fluctuations between masking requirements, once the metric to discontinue the district's mask requirement has been met, masks will remain strongly recommended, but not required until or unless the school board takes action to institute a new mask requirement. So in this first option, we went from substantial or high, the language of high only. In the next option that is outlined in this document, this would be effective February twenty second of twenty twenty two. Should the seven day incident rate per one hundred thousand people as defined by the CDC be lower on February twenty fifth as compared to today, February second, seven, which would indicate a decline in cases. Regardless of the community transmission level for Butler County, face masks will be strongly recommended, but not required. And then again, again, the same disclaimer is added to avoid fluctuating between the masking requirements once the metric has been met to discontinue the mask requirement. That masks will remain strongly recommended, but not required until or unless the school board would take action to institute a new mask requirement. So those are the two options presented within this document.
Thank you, Dr. Polano. And let's go through the last two items before we give the board a chance to ask questions. The next item is identifying and restricting non essential visitors and volunteers. And at the beginning of the pandemic, again, this is not unusual. Many businesses are still doing this. As a matter of fact, maybe not your retail businesses, but corporate America is still in this position, many offices. But we are recommending, and we were already looking at this in December and January. And we began to open the doors more frequently to non essential visitors, but we want to do more of this. And so we are recommending that the district begin to permit more in person visitors to our schools. We already have these visitors in the evening with our sporting events or club events. We would be recommending the district begin to permit more in person visitors during the day in our schools. And virtual meetings will remain an option by request. If parents don't choose to come in person, face to face. Maybe we have an immunocompromised family and they would feel safer in a virtual environment. We can still conduct parent meetings in that virtual environment. And that has really been the silver, some of the silver linings. I know there's been a lot of negative things about this pandemic. But we did not have prior to the pandemic, a virtual option for our parents when it came to IEP meetings, GIEP meetings, or any other type of parent meeting, parent teacher meetings. And so if the parents and families still want that, we can still offer that. And again, that action item to be next Monday, unless you want that to be more aggressive, effective for February fifteenth. The next item, if you would scan down further, Dr. Polano. Under diagnosing and screening testing, we would recommend that the temperature screening stations no longer be utilized for action on February fourteenth, effective February fifteenth. They are labor intensive. And we now know that that is not the only symptom and it's not the number one symptom. Especially when it comes to what we're dealing with this year versus last year. Under returning isolated or quarantine staff, students or visitors to school environment. Here, we would not need any changes in this section of the plan simply because our current quarantine letter does say recommended. Now, if the Pennsylvania Department of Health steps in and they quarantine or hype, in many cases, a doctor will recommend that an employee or a child or a family isolate. That would be on them and communicating that to our nurses, but we would not be requiring that. And so the letters have been modified and will continue to at least notify parents that there's been a close contact. But quarantine, quarantining and isolation will not necessarily be required by the school. It could be still required by the Pennsylvania Department of Health. And in that case, it's out of our hands. The next section, Dr. Polano. Sports and extracurricular activities. There aren't many changes here. They're very small changes. And in this case, you know, we haven't been requiring mask after school. And we haven't been requiring mask. The board has not required mask for a while now while playing a sport since that mandate was lifted. And so here we have some small changes about how we would go about distancing and still trying to do things safely. But this action and these changes would be effective again for February fifteenth. Dr. Polano, is that the end of our document? I believe it is.
Yes.
Scan down. Thank you. So I want to thank Dr. Polano and Nurse Williams for leading this initiative and talking about when the numbers are low, how can we begin pulling back on mitigations? And how can we do this in a public way so that parents are aware? Now, contrary to popular belief, I don't get a vote and I don't make all the decisions here. It's why we have a nine member school board. We need five or more board members to vote on making these changes in public. And those board members may choose if they, if they want to deliberate, it has to occur here in public. And so I am one of those team members that helped to guide the board, but I don't get a vote. These are recommendations by the administration. And it is a draft. So at the end of the day, it is the public elected through the school board that decides where we will head next in our schools. Nurse Williams is also here as our lead nurse administrator. And she could answer any questions if you have questions. But I would encourage the board to deliberate since this hasn't been deliberated in quite some time. And in the board's defense, because the numbers were so high in December and January. And because we had so many staffing issues and bus driver issues and logistics, you know, operational issues were all consuming in those first two weeks of January. And before the board deliberates, I do want to thank our, regardless of the decision the board makes. I want to thank our parents for being so patient and our students and staff for being so cooperative and hanging in there with us. It's been difficult. It's been challenging. And every person that works at Seneca Valley has really been so patient about the health and safety plan and and what the board has asked them to do as the public. And so I want to thank all those who have helped us through really significant staffing shortages to stay open in the first two weeks of January. Thank you. That is all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Dr. Vitell. We're going to get into, you know, I think it will be a robust discussion on these issues. So I guess we'll start out, there are really six items. Five would require action by the board. The, the one that doesn't is the return, returning of a quarantine student. So that one wouldn't change. There's really five items that we're gonna, you know, have some conversation around and then potentially look to to have an action on next week. So are there any, I guess we'll start out with the easy one. Are there any questions for either Dr. Plano? Or, you know, I think there's, there's Nurse Williams at this point as to what's in there. And then we can have the, the rest of the discussions. For the right questions first, anyone wants to get out there? Looking around. Okay. Well, that's easy one. Okay. So as far as thoughts on, on these issues, anyone want to open it up? Okay, Ms. Harrison.
A couple of things. First of all, I, the two that stand out is the cafeteria and the Plexiglas. I think it's been proven that the Plexiglas or has been shown by a lot of studies that because of how COVID travels through the air, Plexiglas may not do be that beneficial. From what I understand, it gets dirty easily, food gets splashed up on and so on. So I don't have an issue removing that saying tomorrow or next week is an issue to me. The other issue is the masking. I think the biggest deterrent and the biggest deterrent in getting COVID is vaccination. And I think everybody's had adequate time to get vaccinated if they wanted to get vaccinated. And at this point, we probably need to look at a timeframe for removing the masks. And I'm okay with a combination of those two methods that were recommended.
So, so what I'm hearing, Ms. Harrison, is, you know, the, the two, and and that's, I guess I'll throw this out there. You know, basically, if we get to moderate or lower, then we would go mask optional or as long as we show a decrease in cases between now and yeah, help me, the twenty fifth, right?
Twenty fifth. I thi- I think it was twenty fifth, yes.
So would, would you be, I mean, when you say a, a combination, what, what are you looking for? Because, you know, there's two different, you know, we could maybe, you know, knock on wood, everything continued by the time we're having this discussion next Monday. We could be in moderate. So that would be different than, you know, just that regular decline.
Right. And the reason I say that is because our zip code numbers are so much lower.
Okay, okay.
And I think we really need to look at that more so than the whole county because you're talking, there's a huge difference between Cranberry Township and Forward Township. Just population wise, density wise. And even if you go, so let's go outside Seneca School District. And we go all the way up. I guess Slippery Rock, is that in Butler County still?
It is.
Okay, Slippery Rock, much more rural area. Um, so I think we need to really look at the zip codes and where our students are living. So that's what leads me more to that, that point.
All right. I guess, you know, what I want to come out of this discussion with is if there is a any of these items, right? Someone's modified or, or changed to, I'd rather do that today. I mean, basically, you know, have the verbiage changed, Ms. Plano, I'm sure you have, or Dr. Plano, excuse me. You have the document, you could make any of those changes. We could actually maybe pull the wording back up. We know what we're talking about for next week. We can have those, you know, basically sleep on it. And then next week we can come back, have the final discussion and, and vote on it at that point. That would be my intention. Unless someone wants to do something different, you know, I, I want to hear that voice as well. But I think, Ms. Harrison, what you're saying right now, you're fine with the cafeteria one anyway. It's really around the masking, which you'd like to see us eat somehow combined as, to say, either we're in moderate or below. Or we continue that decrease. And then when we hit the twenty eighth, if we still decrease, then we would go mask option at that point. Did I?
And I don't.
Your thoughts?
It does, but I don't know if we want to look at the whole county or if we want to just more focus on the zip codes.
What? Okay, let's do this then. I'm gonna look around the screen and find out, is there anyone opposed or would have a different thought process on making changes? We can then discuss the metric and, and would, or is there anyone that's, hey, this is not a good idea? And I don't see these changes being beneficial. So, because of, you know, let's be honest, if we can't get, you know, a consensus of at least five of us, you know, we're not going to move forward with anything. So you know, I'd like to get some other opinions and, and thoughts on this, you know, and, and maybe someone says, hey, we keep it, you know, until throw out another date, you know, those different metrics can change. So any other thoughts of Fred?
So I, I believe I said last month that we need to be careful that we're not applying a twenty twenty solution to a twenty twenty two problem. As Ms. Harrison cogently pointed out, there, there's been a lot of changes in these couple of years. Some for the good, some for the bad. We've learned some lessons that, that we needed to change things. We've learned some lessons that we needed to stay the course. I think that the fact that the Omicron, while it's highly transmissible, but very contagious, is not producing really sick kids. It's not as pathogenic as the Delta or the Alpha was. Gives us some leeway to, to lighten up on some of our requirements. I'm, at this point, I'm at this point balancing the benefit of the mitigations and the physiologic emanation with the psychological issues that we're starting to see and be documented in reports and studies from being restricted by masks or by quarantine or isolation. All that said, I'm in favor of, at this point, all of the changes that were recommended specifically the B change under masking. And would, would take that position with a strong caveat that we need to be ready to pivot. We haven't heard that pivot word for a long time. But we need to be able to pivot quickly back into a higher level of mitigation if we have a, an explosion of cases.
Thanks Fred. And I think it's an excellent point to make sure we clarify that no matter what we do, we as a board can always make a change, whether it's masking, whether it's, you know, further social distancing and put back in the cafeteria spreads and things like that. I know it probably won't go back to a Plexiglas scenario because we, you know, we know better now. But some of those other changes can always take effect again. So.
Mr. DiTullio, I want to add about the Plexiglas. Keep in mind, the Plexiglas doesn't just mitigate for COVID, it helps with spacing. Plexiglas wasn't just to try to mitigate what we later learned, learned to be an aerosol, but it helps with spacing children out. So keep in mind, that is our recommendation to you to take that down. But when you do, children will get closer and now without mask. We want to be honest and transparent about this.
Excellent point. Thank you. And, and that would be the reason we'd put it back as a spacer to keep kids more separated. That's a good point. Any other comments? But, Mr. Hester?
Yes, one thing I wanted to discuss or add in there is some consideration for teachers and staff. I know we've added it in there where if parents would prefer to do Zoom or, or virtual meetings with, you know, teachers or IEP meetings and stuff like that, we ought to have an option so the teacher would, because of whatever circumstance they have, would request a mask be worn by parent coming in or continue to do virtual IEPs or IEPs, whatever. That they continue to have that option for themselves also. So that if we're going to have statement one way, I think we need to have statements both ways in there.
And that's a very good point. And I will, I will, Dr. Robertson, I'm gonna say, you know, from, I, I think having GIPs and IEP meetings virtually can be a great benefit moving into the future. And I think now that everyone has, you know, at least an understanding of Zoom and Teams, you know, I think that's something we could continue to provide. You know, I won't put words in your mouth and Dr. Vitell's pregnant, you know, she's gonna cringe whenever I say it, but I, I think that's become a benefit. It's something we can offer to parents to make their lives a little bit easier as well. Am I overstating that?
No, I, I would, I would say that we're finding that more parents are engaged because we're able to do virtual meetings. In a lot of cases, it's difficult to get off work to, to drive to the campus or whatever, wherever the local school is. And, and to participate in the meeting, we're finding a lot of cases, two parents or guardians are able to attend where perhaps in the past only one. So that the larger number of voices at the table, I think is a benefit in most cases.
Absolutely. And I agree. And I think, Mr. Hester, to your other point, you know, when there is a, a teacher parent conference, I, I don't think it's, you know, unreasonable for one to ask someone to wear a mask in that situation. You know, no different than, you know, hey, make sure we're staying six feet apart or whatever. So those, those are things that people can do is just, you know, being friendly as well, you know. I, I would also recommend that it, you know, this does go into effect. I want that optional masking to, to be that. If a parent feels that their child should be wearing a mask and by all means that, that child should. And I would highly recommend the N95 masks when possible, because, you know, we found in, I think Ms. Harrison said it, you know, the, the vaccine is out there and it protects, you know, whoever gets that vaccine. And the mask protects who's ever wearing that mask, if it's an N95 mask, that's some of the changes, the, the 2022 solutions are important. And those are the things that we're finding. So I think those types of things and being able to have those options are important. I, I think that the teachers, being able to wear the masks if they so choose, that's our option as well, you know. I, I don't know, and I guess, Dr. Vitell, you know, part of it would be if someone's more comfortable with a, a face mask. You know, is that something, you know, it hasn't been in the past, something that was a CDC approved? But is that something that would, you know, the, the clear face mask that, you know, we remember people wearing at the beginning of the pandemic? Is that something that, you know, if someone wants to wear that, they'd be allowed to wear that as well?
Yes, but again, we're finding those don't offer much protection either, like the Plexiglas. I would also add that the language that Mr. Hester is asking us to look at, we can do that. I also, I just want to clarify for the public, I've had sometimes public members say, well, if teachers are afraid, they can wear a mask and they can get vaccinated. I want to publicly say, I have not had a single teacher tell me they're afraid of getting COVID. But I have had teachers say, I'm afraid that I'll have to quarantine and miss work. I want to be here for the kids. And so I think that speaks loudly about, you know, we haven't had any pressure from our teachers' union, unlike other states. We've instead have, have, we have had teachers say, I don't want to get sick because I want to be here for the kids. And I don't want to miss work because I want to be here for my children. And so I, I want to make sure that I say that publicly, because I think there's at times some confusion that people think teachers or administrators are afraid of getting COVID. We aren't. We don't want to miss work. We want to be here for children. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Vitell. That's a great point. You know, the staffing issues that we had were because people were sick, you know, and if you don't get sick, you can come to work. So that's a great thing. And that's what we want to make sure we, we keep producing. Mr. Peterson, I see you, but I think, Mr. Jacobs, you were, you were waiting in the wings first, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Tulio. I guess I'll pass along my gratitude to the administration as well for helping us navigate, I guess we'll call the next phase here. Mr. Tulio, to your, to your original question on, on any, any input on the metric. I guess my, my personal opinion is I'd prefer to stop attaching a metric to this decision and just make the decision without a qualifier. I guess in the two, and I say that for two reasons. I guess the first, perhaps to Mr. Peterson's point is the current CDC thresholds were developed on a different variant before student vaccinations were available, different quarantines, et cetera. So I, I don't know that those are still relevant. But maybe more than that, I think we're learning more about how COVID is or is not transmitted in schools, whether you're masked or not. And generally speaking, it tracks with community transmission, whether masked or not. I think that other schools in Butler County provide a template for this, schools in other states provide a template for this. You know, if you look at the cases in Butler County, the other Butler County schools, their line graphs look a lot like our line graphs over the last six weeks. And they track pretty closely with community transmission and we stay within that point five percent, one percent of folks within the school. So perhaps, I, I don't, I don't know that matters if we're three fifty or four hundred, or if we use zip codes, or if we use the county numbers. I, I guess in my view, you know, two weeks does not make a pandemic. I think we've all learned that. And so I guess, Mr. Tulio, to get very specific, I would support the second option if that's the only one out there. But I think at this point, my preference would be we make a decision without a qualifier on it. So I will pass it back to you.
Thank you very much. I did see Mr. Peterson. So I'm going to go back to Mr. Peterson and then, Ms. Brady, I'll come to you.
I think it's pertinent at this point in the conversation to point out a situation that, that Mrs. Williams has reported to us. And I'll ask her to correct me if I'm incorrect. But I believe she's found through her case finding and tracing that there's very little disease that's welling up out of the student population. It's more likely that kids who get, come up positive, have contracted the disease through interactions with other children from, from home or, or other activities outside school. And to that end, I would also remind us that Mr. Miller and his staff have done a yeoman's job in enhancing the air quality in the classrooms in the schools through improving the filtration system and, and providing upgrades to the ventilation, the HVAC. So we've got, it's, it appears that the changes we've made in the environment have led, or one of the factors that have led to a lower transmission rate within the buildings.
Thank you, Mr. Peterson. Ms. Bradyle, I think I saw you.
Thank you, Mr. DiTullio. First of all, I'd just like to say that for me, from the get-go, it's been about providing a safe and in-person learning environment for all our students and staff. And I think that we have done that up until this point, and I'm very proud of it. We've had consistent in-person learning since the start of school and we haven't had to pivot. But with that said, things have changed now. We have other tools in our toolkit. We have the vaccines and families that choose to have their children vaccinated or, you know, staff that chooses to be vaccinated, they've had that offered opportunity. So I think as Dr. Vitell shared with us, it is time to consider some off-ramps. But to do those in a safe manner so that we don't create any unintended consequences. So I guess for me, I'm leaning towards option two. I, yeah, Mr. Jacobs had mentioned that we take away all metrics and just make the decision. I guess I, I have a little bit, like, I feel like we need to make the decision based on something. I don't really know what that is because we've all agreed that the, the CDC rules or guidelines have, don't really apply like they did back in the fall. But, but what is that metric? I, I like what Ms. Harrison has suggested, that we look at our zip code and see how we're progressing. I think, you know, we could still have peaks and valleys and I don't want to like rip the Band-Aid off the kids tomorrow and then we have to put them on in a week. But I definitely think that it's, it's time to, to move forward. So yeah, I guess, you know, as far as the cafeteria mitigation, we could do that tomorrow. But I would feel more comfortable waiting till we see another week or two of data and then, you know, move forward the end of the month. And I guess one last thing, I would just like to, you know, thank the administration, the staff, the students, the parents for their patience through this. We've all navigated this in the best way we thought to keep everybody safe. And, you know, I think, I think we're making progress. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bradyle. Mr. Rotterson, so your hand up?
Trying to get off mute here. I would support what Mrs. Bradyle said. We have been very successful in keeping school open and that has been our goal the entire time. And kudos to the administration for, for, for being able to do that. And I completely agree that we need to do it in a measured manner, rather than just stepping on the gas pedal and go full speed ahead. So therefore I would support the second option. That gives us another little bit more time to take a look at things. But, but I completely agree that things have changed and we need to start to be looking at getting back to whatever the new norm was going to be, but we need to do it, continue in a safe manner. So we can keep the kids in school and keep everybody safe. So therefore I, the cafeteria, I have no problem with also. But I think option number two is the, the most logical way at this point, at least for me to go.
Thank you, Mr. Rotterson.
Anyone, just one more thought. I, my rec, my preference would be that we use a publicly available number like the one published by the CDC or DOH. I think the challenge with zip codes, while perhaps more relevant is to Dr. Vitell's point, it's kind of one that we calculate ourselves from public data that you can do math on. But that one, Dr. Vitell, please keep me honest, is not something that's regularly published by the, by the Health Department of the CDC and rather one that we calculate on our own. So I just think there's value in a public number that everybody can see rather than one that we calculate on our own.
I will say what is publicly available is total cases in each zip code since the pandemic started. So if that total number in Renfrew goes up by four since yesterday, we just simply calculate a plus four. And so it is still pretty easy math to see where it's changing, going up, usually not down, but we're seeing much better trends. So we can do that and it's pretty simple math, but you do have to go into the DOH website. You have to sort by county, then you have to sort by zip code. Then you have to hover over each zip code to find the new number every day. So it is more difficult to find, but we can do that.
But it is still, it's still DOH in numbers. It's not once you're calculating all by yourself.
The raw data is from the Department of Health, correct?
That's correct.
Yeah.
Okay. I'm gonna look at, Ms. Whittle, I, I'm gonna call you out because
No, I'm, I'm, I'm I'm hitting my mute button. It, it just, it just went off. I, I have, my, my thoughts are very similar to what everybody, buddy is saying. Ms. Bradyle, what she said about, that was our goal back in August when we implemented masks. Safe environment for our students, for our faculty to have in-person, that's our best chance to have in-person learning. And I'm very proud that the bumps the, in the road and some of the ridicule and emotions, I'm very proud that we kept those children in the classroom with their teachers as much as possible. I, I would prefer to have a number or have something quantitative. What that number is, I'm not sure. I think I'm leaning more towards what our zip code numbers are because like Slippery Rock, it's, you have Slippery Rock University in those numbers in Slippery Rock. And that's not indicative, you know, indicating of, of our area. So our area is unique to itself. It's not perfect, but I think it's a little closer than taking the whole, the whole county. I've always been for masks. I think masks still add to prevention, but I do feel that we have to start looking forward and making steps. We have the vaccinations, people have had time to be vaccinated or make those choices, vacci, you know, to be vaccinated. There's medicine starting to get developed. That there, we're moving in the right direction and I feel like we need to move as diligent as we have with good plan, which I, I thank the administration for laying this out and giving us an opportunity to tweak it. But I, I feel that we're in the, in the right direction and I feel it also gives those people, we've heard a lot from people that don't want masks because we are masking. Now let's turn that. Now the community is hearing us say, we're planning and this is our, our plan for not having masks. So maybe it gives the opportunity for those people that still want to be masked to wrap their head around it. Maybe have a dialogue with us or the administration. But I am in favor of, you know, the plan two for going down. Let me look at my, my list. But I think I've covered, covered, I wish, I, I like our faculty vaccination number at seventy-four percent or seventy-five percent. I wish our students, that, that, that was surprise, that's a surprising number to me, that's so low. So I just want to put that out as a, it's my opinion, really.
Thank you very much, Ms. Whittle. I, I guess my, my comment to that, and I could be totally wrong. I guess my, my comment to that, and I could be totally wrong. As we know, you know, parents are volunteering, voluntarily giving us the information when their, when their students are vaccinated. And, you know, there's no reason to give it to us unless, you know, a quarantine situation has come up. I think that's when we probably get the majority of, hey, my child is vaccinated.
It's a reported number, not an actual.
I believe that. I don't, I, I have nothing to back that up other than the folks that we talk to, you know, in the community that I talk to. That's what I'm here. So I think that there's probably a lot more with the vaccine than what we know.
I do want to, I do want to throw one more thing out there. I don't know if it's a majority, or if it's a, have a survey just to see where, where the public, where the public is. It's just, I could be swayed one way or another, but that would be another factor to take a look at, and it could be quantitative, and it really gives the public the opportunity to, to, to take the, the survey to see where they are. But I know a lot of facets, you know, the survey is only as good as the questions that are asked, so, but that's just a thought.
So I guess my, my comment on that is if we're looking to make some sort of a change by next week in order to, you know, get the survey out, get the information back, get it to us, you know, I don't know if we have enough time necessarily to do all that before next week. We could do it for next month's meeting, but it might be a moot point by then, you know, if we're gonna make a decision next week on making some sort of change. I guess, you know, depending on where we come out of today, if it's something we decide we want to direct the administration to do, we can definitely have that conversation as well to see. But I, I think the timeline is gonna be very tight in order to do that. So it's meaningful for us to be able to consider before next week's meeting, to be honest.
I respect that. Like, I always have, like, we don't have time that, it's like, you know, if it's important, I think we should make time. But that's just my opinion. I'm only one of nine. So if anyone else wants to, thinks it's a good idea, but, and I'm okay, you know, whatever we decide.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Bradle.
I'd just like to chime in that I would also be in favor of a survey. And I think the majority of us were leaning towards option two, which is towards the end of the month. So that would allow for a survey to go out to our families. I think, you know, right now, we only have a hundred and some people on the call. So a lot of families may not even have thought we might be moving in this direction because we already have this approved safety plan in place. So I think we could get their feedback. And also, it's a good opportunity to share where we are with our vaccination status. I think a lot of people had assumed that our student vaccination rate was much higher than it is. So those are just a couple of things that I would like to, to point out in the information that goes out if we could get that survey developed within the next week or two.
All right, let me, let me do this. I'm gonna put Dr. Vitale and Ms. Andracy on the spot. If, if we were to ask for a survey to be done to, to get this pertinent information, you know, basically vaccine status of the students, you know, whoever's in the household, and whether they would want the masking, you know, on or off. I mean, let's just keep it simple that way. What do you think time wise to get that out, get responses back, and to report back to us? What's a, what, what timeline makes sense to you?
Well, it depends what you want in the survey. People think that surveys are easy to develop, and they are if you ask yes or no. If you want qualifiers in your questions, if you want a valid and reliable survey, then we have to put things in place like one IP address per home. Do you want parents to have four votes for four kids? Or you want one parent vote? Or do you want two parent votes? So all of those factors need to be considered. We can work as fast as we possibly can. I highly doubt we can have one done by Friday that would be valid and reliable. And then also, let's say we could. And let's say you give it by Friday, you gotta give people time to take it. And their answer on Monday, the fourteenth, might differ from the data you get on the twenty-eighth. So it can be done, we work for you. But there is some technical background we've got to put together. Anyone who has any background in statistics or surveys, it's a large population you're surveying. For instance, I'm a senior, senior citizen and I pay taxes. Do I get a vote? Because they write us too. So there's just a lot of unanswered questions, and I need direction from the board on that before we start to build one. It's not as simple as, do you want a mask or don't you? Because we need more data and qualifiers from the board.
So let me ask.
The thing that's critical.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. None of you. The other thing that's critical about any survey is understanding the biases inherent in the response. Looking at who responds, you know, is the reason why they always ask you, are you male or you're female? What's your age, those kinds of things? So it's not just a matter of developing a survey and sending it out. It's a matter of understanding and analyzing the response.
Thank you. But let me ask you this, right now, what I'm hearing, and, and, you know, we can put this together. But I'm hearing basically there's consensus around the, the second option, the effective date of two twenty-eight, as long as our seven-day average is going down compared from the twenty-fifth till today, that we would make masks optional in Butler County. There seems to be consensus at least around that point. Is there anyone that would speak against us making that change to be voted on next week? Let's just put it that way. Okay, I'm not seeing any there. So then the second question that I have is, we can do this survey. And is there anyone that would object to still voting on option two next week without the survey results in? Would, would that be a, you know, a red act for anyone to say?
Mr. Jacob, you didn't, Mr. Toy, you, I don't think this directly answers your question, but I would speak against the survey. I guess one of the things I'm most proud of this board of is the last twenty-three months, we made the call on behalf of the, of the community, and we've owned it to do a survey twenty-three months in when we haven't before. I mean, seems a little disingenuous to me, so I would, I would speak against the survey.
Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Mr. Wooderson.
I would also, am I muted? No.
No, you're not, you're good.
I would also speak against the survey. I, I agree with Mr. Jacobs. We've been elected to make the decision, and we've been making the decision for twenty-three months. And now we're, we're almost to potentially moving back to normal. We have a decent roadmap in front of us, I think, and I think we continue to stay with that and, and make the decisions from there. I would speak against the survey.
Ms. Harrison.
I also would go against having a survey, the time and cost and not knowing if it's skewed. I just don't think we need to do that. We've made the decisions all along. And like he's, Mr. Woodson said, we have to own them. Mr. Jacob said, we own them. We met, we own our decisions. We're hopefully reaching out to our constituents to see how they feel. And that's what we signed up for, so.
Thank you, Ms. Harrison. I, I guess I'll look to, you know, I'm, I'm assuming Ms. Whittle and Ms. Bradle, you did not change your mind in the last, you know, five minutes here on, on wanting the survey. So I'm gonna, you know, just look to Mr. Hester and Mr. Peterson, get your thoughts on the survey. And I know I'm calling you guys out a little bit, but, you know, let's try to figure out what we want to do here.
I, I think that we don't really need to go to the survey. I think that, I mean, I know I do, I communicate with, with people daily. I, I see the emails, I see the Facebook posts, I, 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 I think I got a good, I have a good grasp on my decision. So I really don't see the need for a survey.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Hester. Ms. Pearson, do you have thoughts either way?
I appreciate the purpose behind doing a survey of hearing the people speak. I have to speak against it, though, given the time we have, the return of that investment, I think, will be minimal. And I think there's just gonna be so many methodological problems that we won't have any more information than we had before the survey. So I would not be in favor of doing this in the manner it's proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Pearson. I will say that, you know, not that matters, you know, there, there's five that are speaking against the survey. I wouldn't be in favor of a survey just based on timeframe, and I think we have a good direction that we're headed in. I'd almost hate to upset the apple cart and hear people complaining we're not doing it fast enough or something along those lines at this point. You know, we are, I, I think, and I think it was Ms. Bradle used the exit ramp analogy, or someone did. So, you know, I like that one. Yeah, we, we do have an exit ramp strategy that we want to put in place, which would, and as long as I'm getting this right, we're gonna use option two next week to be considered. And if there's anyone that would speak against doing this as a single motion, please let me know, you know, for the five changes that we have out there, please let me know, so I can direct Dr. Vitale. But if not, what I would recommend we do is put all these into one motion as a change to our health and safety plan for next week. Ms. Whittle, I'm sorry.
Can you just, for the public, just for record, those five things, just highlight them?
Sure, excellent. So what we'd be doing is next week, we'll be looking to make the modifications to our health and safety plan. That would be cafeteria to update the cafeteria protocol to be maximize space between students while eating. But we will no longer have, I'll just read it. Maximize space between students while eating will remain a priority. However, additional spaces will not, no longer be required to be utilized to accommodate for increased distances between students. Physical barriers such as plexiglass will no longer be utilized as mitigation strategy unless or until a rationale for doing so is deemed appropriate. And the use of reusable food service items will be restored, and disposable food service items will be used only as needed. The second would be universal wearing of face masks. And that would read, the change would be effective February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. Should the seven-day isn't rate for one hundred thousand people as defined by the CDC be lower on February twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-two as compared to February seventh, twenty-twenty-two, regardless of the community transmission level for Butler County, face masks will be strongly recommended but not required. And to avoid fluctuation between masking requirements, once the metric to discontinue the district's mask requirement has been met, masks will remain strongly recommended but not required until or unless the school board takes action to institute a new mask requirement. The next item would be the identifying and restricting non-essential visitors and volunteers. The district will begin to permit more in-person visitors to our schools. Virtual meetings will remain an option by request. The next item would be diagnostic and screening testing, temperature screening tape, excuse me, temperature screening stations will no longer be required. The returning of isolated or quarantine staff, students, or visitors to the school environment. No changes are necessary in that section of the plan, so that would be one that we, we would be keeping as is. And the next one is sports and extracurricular activities. The only change that I saw here was, I gotta find this again. We'll change the wording, if a positive case of COVID nineteen is diagnosed, contact tracing will be conducted, and parents and guardians will be notified of the recommended guidance. And finally, that would be it. There's, there's some other things that are being deleted, and those have been recommendations per the order of the acting secretary, but those are more deletions to the text and not additions or changes. So hopefully that clarifies it for the public. This will be something that we will be putting out on the agenda, so everyone can see it before our meeting next week as well. So that would be out there. So are there any other questions or comments or concerns on this issue and the changes that we will look to vote on next week? I don't see anyone sticking their hand up, so that's a good thing. So since there's no other questions or comments, Dr. Vitale, do you have anything else to add, or can we move on in the meeting?
You may move on, that's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Everyone, thank you. The consensus of the board is always something I always look forward to. We do things for the right reasons. So thank you very much. We do have a small action agenda, and we are going to start that with public comment. We have one speaker today. Before we get started, I'm just gonna read the public comment guidelines. We do have a board policy that allows for thirty minutes of public comment. Each speaker is allowed up to four minutes. We extended that to allow up to fifteen speakers to register. We have one, so we won't hit the time and/or number of speakers. Per our policy, all statements shall be directed to the presiding officer, and that is me. No participant may address or question board members individually. Speakers are allowed to name and speak of their own children but are unable to reference other students by name. Public comment portion is just that, an opportunity for the public to provide feedback, information, and opinions on upcoming board votes. Please address the board with respect and stability, just as you would expect to be treated in your home or workplace, and just as we expect students to act in our classrooms. This board has done their very best to keep politics out of the boardroom and away from our school board agenda business. This is not where we campaign, this is where we conduct official school business. So I'm gonna ask that our speaker tonight refrain from anything involving elections or campaigns. I am going to set a timer that will go off at three minutes and thirty seconds as a signal to the speaker to wrap up their comments. At four minutes, I'll let the speaker know that they've reached their limit as a second indicator to complete their comments. And finally, in accordance with our policy, the presiding officer, again, that is me, may interrupt or terminate a participant's statements when the statement is too lengthy, personally directed, abusive, obscene, or irrelevant. So with that out of the way, Dr. Polano, I would ask you to recognize and introduce our speaker, please.
Our speaker this evening is Lindsay Baker. Ms. Baker, you should now have the option to unmute your microphone to address the board. Okay, can you hear me?
Yes, you can.
As you reevaluate the health and safety plan, please consider the following quote that Dr. Vitale shared during the January tenth school board meeting regarding countywide COVID numbers. Quote, "Some districts in our county are much higher than us. Some districts are much lower than us with or without masks. So there is no rhyme or reason that we can specifically point to, just like we've experienced throughout this pandemic." End quote. I would also like to remind the board that Seneca Valley is the only school district in Butler County that continues to require face coverings. Since the majority of school board members do not have school-aged children living at home, I would like to share with the board what it is like living this nightmare. We have two students at the Ryan Warrior Middle School that hate wearing a mask to school every day. However, they continue to comply with the rule to avoid being humiliated by teachers and staff in front of their friends. They come home and vent to me about how they truly feel, and I don't blame them one bit. We have explored other school options in order to escape this mask charade at Seneca Valley. But the reality is that middle school students do not want to be away from their friends and teammates, so they comply. They have learned to play the game and tolerate this stupidity. But more concerning to me is the effect that this nonsense is having on our elementary student. He is a fun-loving nine-year-old that has always loved learning and being at Evan City. Things are much different this year. He dreads going to school and begs to stay home. He says that lunch and recess aren't even fun anymore because he can't talk to his friends or share toys. He has a posture of defeat because teachers and staff members are always yelling at the kids to wear masks. The policies that you have put in place have sucked the joy out of my children and led them to hate going to school. As a parent, it is absolutely heartbreaking to witness this decline. And I believe that if all of you had school-aged children at home right now, then you would see this masking issue much differently. I would also like to share with you the reality of raising school-aged children during these challenging times. The cliche of living in this challenging time is because people like you are making it challenging for parents like me. School is the only place that our children wear masks. Our kids continue to go to birthday parties, sleepovers, playdates, trampoline parks, swimming gyms, church, restaurants, grocery stores, shopping, all without masks. We continue to attend football games, lacrosse tournaments, swim meets, wrestling tournaments, baseball games, track meets, cross-country races, fundraisers, holiday gatherings, all without masks. Why is school any different? I understand that Seneca Valley places a high importance on the mental health of students and staff members. If you want to alleviate teacher stress, then If you want to alleviate teacher stress, then do away with mask requirements. Let the teachers teach instead of being the mask police. If you wanna advocate for the mental health of students, then allow masking to be a personal choice. The decision to mask these kids is having a heartbreaking negative impact on my children, and I will not stop fighting for this abuse to end. Every child may not be as miserable as mine, but let every parent make the decision as to what is best for their child. At this time, there are multiple levels of protection. Vaccines are available as well as boosters along with natural immunity and masking is an option for those who choose to mask. In fact, if you feel unsafe around unmasked people, then you have the choice to wear as many masks as you want. Forcing our children to wear masks, knowing that COVID is not a risk to children, is child abuse. The psychological damage is already taking a toll on these innocent children. Masking is no longer about COVID, but rather it is about power and control. Please end this abuse and let parents parent their children as they see fit.
Thank you very much. We will move on in our agenda. Um, at this time, I would look for a motion to approve the following, to approve the resignations, appointments, leaves, sabbatical, retirement, and memorandum, memorandums of understanding as provided our backup and discussed in executive session. Can I have a motion, please? Thank you, Mr. Whittson. Is there a second? Thank you, Ms. Harrison. Uh, we discussed this all in executive session, so Ms. Mizlin, if you'd call the role, please.
Ms. Whittle?
Yes.
Mr. Nickel? Ms. Harrison?
Yes.
Ms. Bradle?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Peterson?
Yes.
Mr. Hester?
Yes.
Mr. Whitterson?
Yes.
And Mr. DeTulio?
Yes.
Motion carries with eight in the affirmative and one absent.
Thank you very much. Move uh to what we will be working on next week. Uh, next week, we will look to approve the minutes of our meetings from our work session of January tenth, twenty twenty two, and our regular meeting of January eighteenth, twenty twenty two. And that is providing your backup. We'll look to approve the treasurer's report as providing your backup. The general fund bills, we'll look to approve that in the amount of three million, seven hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and nineteen dollars and fifty-seven cents. That is in your backup as well. And the construction fund bills, they're providing your backup in the amount of two million, one hundred and fifty-six thousand, five hundred and three dollars and eighty-two cents. Uh, if there's any questions on any of those items, uh, please let Ms. Berger know. Or if there's anything on the approval of the minutes and changes, uh, just let me know about those as well. Move on to administrative action and in Mr. Nichols' absence, I will take this. We'll look to approve the following items of our administrative action, the board policies, to approve the following board policies as provided your backup. Policy eight hundred point one, uh, electronic signatures, approve board policy eight hundred point one. This is the second and final reading. And policy zero zero eight organizational organizational chart, to approve board policy zero zero eight organizational chart revised first reading. Our twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar, to approve the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school calendar is providing our backup. Local district holidays, to approve the resolution regarding local district holidays for the twenty twenty-two, twenty-three school year as providing your backup. Care solace, uh, to approve an agreement with care solace to provide mental health, care coordination and support for students, staff and their families from March first, twenty twenty-two through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, pending final solicitor review and as Dr. Roberts uh presented, and that's also including our backup. And finally, the review of the Seneca Valley School District Health and Safety Plan of twenty twenty-one, twenty-two. Um, we already had our board deliberation on this item. We will incorporate that and have that motion out to everyone uh this week to uh, review as well. Are there any questions on any of those items? Looking around, I am not seeing any, so we'll move on to instruction action. Ms. Harrison, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, next week we'll look to approve conference requests as provided in the backup.
Thank you very much. Any question on the conferences? Hearing and seeing that, we'll move on to business and finance action. Mr. Jacobs, please.
Thank you, Ms. DeTulio. Six items for next week. The first relates to budget transfers and the approval thereof. The second relates to change orders, approve the construction change orders for Herman Crust Elementary and Middle School as included in the backup. Third item is the capital asset protection incorporated security contract, to approve that contract as included in the backup. Fourth item is EB Pfeffer compu- company agreement, approve the revised cleaning contract with EB Pfeffer Company. Fifth item is central maintenance and service agreement to approve the revised cleaning contract with central maintenance and service. And the last item is the approval of the consolidation, consolidated, excuse me, communications agreement. Prove a five-year service agreement with Consolidated Communications, Inc. for internet service in the amount of two thousand, one hundred dollars per month beginning on July first, twenty twenty-two. That backup we will receive this week.
Thank you very much, Mr. Jacobs. Any questions or comments on any of these items? Looking around, and I don't see any. Um, so move on. We did receive thirty-four uh pieces of communication last week, or I'm sorry, since our last meeting. Um, and one thing uh I wanted to mention, uh, it was brought up a little bit earlier, but when an email comes to the board, it's addressed to the board, not looking for a specific response from, you know, someone's representative. Um, the board as a whole can only respond as a whole body. Uh, none of us can speak on behalf of the board until there is a a vote and, you know, consensus on on a response. So if someone sends an email and is looking for an answer, they don't say, you know, I want, you know, Eric DeTulio as a school board president or, you know, Mr. Jacobs, I'm gonna throw you under the bus for a second, sir. Uh, Mike Jacobs is my representative to reach out to me, to talk to, then those responses don't go out because when it's the board, it is a response of the entire board. So those are handled during meetings like this where we will have those discussions and address those issues, uh, if they're still relevant. So I don't want people to think we're ignoring them, uh, but I've seen that come in more. So, you know, if you want someone to contact you and specifically talk, say, I'd like my representative or, you know, me or folks, my my phone number's still on the website. Um, feel free to give me a call if you got questions. I'd be happy to answer them. So just wanna point that out. I did see, you know, some of the communication um, that we've seen lately has been questioning why no one got in touch with them. It's because we can't respond on an individual basis, um, you know, to a board question. It sounds weird that that we are, you know, the board as a whole, so. So I'll look uh around the room to see, is there any other item to be brought before the board at this time? Uh, Mr. Whittson, please.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm going to apologize in advance, uh, Mr. President, directly to you because this is probably going to put you in a bind. What I'm doing is not generally what we do. I have never done it in all of my years on the board. But I have a comment regarding our only speaker. For two years, this board has had all kinds of abuse, heaped at them, thrown at them. Certain board members have had their character impugned. Accusations that are just totally outlandish. And then for someone tonight to speak and say, to imply or infer that any member of this board is on this board for some type of power trip or something is just flat wrong. There's no other way to put it. Every member on this board has only one thing in mind, and that is to provide a quality education to the students of this district. Perhaps the caller tonight should have listened to our meeting to see how we try and handle that. And I apologize, this was probably out of line, but at some point, somebody has to be told that they're wrong. And this speaker tonight was absolutely wrong. Thank you.
Welcome, Mr. Whittson. Thank you for your words. Any other item to be brought before the board? Looking around, seeing that, I'm gonna look for a motion to adjourn our meeting then. Uh, thank you, Mr. Whittson. Uh, Ms. Whittle, I'm assuming you'll second that. All right, we have a first and a second on adjournment. Uh, all those in favor of adjournment, please signify by saying aye. Those opposed, nay. All right, we are adjourned. Thank you very much. We'll see you next week, folks. Good night.